Good morning, everyone. We will now call to order the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May 13th. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Present.
And you have a quorum. Please let the record reflect that Supervisor Serna will not be present with us today.
All right. Would the Clerk please read the cable statement?
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded in closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast cable system. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 16th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed toward any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, photo registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. These recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the Clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the Clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the Clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The Clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes, and the remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any announcements?
I do not have any announcements, and we are ready for the off-agenda comments. If you are, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Item one will be public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. And we have several. Let me pull that up. Our first speaker is Russ Patty.
I have something for the Board. Can I hang you there? Just right here. Good morning, esteemed Board.
Good morning.
So recently, you've probably seen the news that Governor Gavin Newsom announced that California is the fourth-largest economic power in the world, and the United States in the world. And when Governor Newsom was asked what he attributes this great achievement to, he said unequivocally, "It was because of..." California creates an environment of sustainability for families. This is the foundational philosophy of Highlands. We create people be able... An opportunity for people to be able to move from survivability to sustainability. We allow them to get jobs, to contribute back to the community. It is who we are. It is what we do. I would like you to imagine for a second if you were dealing with the IRS, and the IRS came to you eight years ago and said, nine years ago, and said, "Hey, listen, for your business license, you need to do this, and for you to run your business, you need to do these things, and these things, and these things." And you did all those things. And you did, and you followed their rules. And this went on for eight years. "Hey, you're doing a great job. Thank you very much." And then in the ninth year, the IRS came to you and said, "Hey, listen, I know we told you to get these, and to do this, and everything else, but now we're changing that on you. Now we're going to sit there and say, 'Hey, you know what? We're going to not only punish you for doing what we told you to do, but we're going to go ahead and fine you for all those previous years that you did what we told you to do.'" This is what happened to Highlands. This is not fair. I need you guys to go ahead and help us. This is your community. These are your people. Problem with homelessness, problem with jobs, your answer is Highlands. This is what we do. We've had hundreds and hundreds of people that were literally homeless before they came to Highlands. They got an education. We taught them job skills. Those people then got jobs. And this just didn't affect one individual. This changed families. And this changed families generationally. They now had opportunities. They were able to contribute. They had jobs. They were able to give back to what they got. This is what we do at Highlands. I'm asking you, please, I know you guys are there, and you're part of the Board, and you guys are doing this because you care about people, and you care about the people in Sacramento County. And when you look back on your lives, I know that I have made this decision for myself. When I look back on my life, and when I ask myself, "What did I do for other people? What did I contribute? How did I change other people's lives? How did I make their lives better?" The answer again is Highlands. And I'm asking you, because I know you care about the people of Sacramento County.
Mr. Patty?
Jobs, homelessness, all those sort of things.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
I will do the best I can. All those things, the answer is Highlands. And I'm begging and pleading with you, if you need to get me on my knees, I will. Please, please, help Highlands. Because we help people. We help your people, the people that you care about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to butcher this name. It's Tu Tao? Did I say that right? Can you correct?
There you go.
I got it? Okay.
My name is Tu Tao, second to speak. Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Tu Tao. I serve as a Community Employment Liaison with Highlands Community Charter and Technical School. Highlands, we serve over 10,000 adults throughout the... A year throughout the region of Sacramento, right? These individuals are returning to education not just for a diploma, but for a chance of meaningful employment and long-term stability. Our students are adults overcoming barriers, reentering the workforce, and striving to break the cycles of poverty through education. We are proud to be more than just a school. We are a bridge to economic mobility. For many, Highlands represents a few, if not the only, pathway to a better future. Through our career technical education programs, along the line with our wraparound services, our operations are geared to help our students succeed. Our impact is local and deeply human. Every student carries a story of perseverance and hope. With your support and collaboration, we can ensure those stories do not end, but move forward into the Sacramento workforce and economy. As you make your decisions that affect education, workforce development, and social equity in the county, I respectfully ask you to recognize the essential roles schools like Highlands plays in advancing these shared goals. Thank you for your time and your commitment to building a stronger and more inclusive Sacramento.
Thank you. Adam Graham?
Good morning. My name is Adam Graham. I've been a teacher at Highlands Community Charter School since 2019. If you are a teacher, you will find that every classroom has the best people in the world in it. I don't know how it happens, but every single one I've walked into, I've thought, "These are the best people." We have people in our classrooms just waiting for the opportunity to contribute. All they want to do is do the work. All our staff wants to do is do the work. We can transform promise and potential into real growth for our communities, into real change. Russell referenced the Governor. The Governor has rolled out this very ambitious workforce plan. Our school is a key element of that plan. There are literally tens of thousands of people who can change their destiny by following this plan. A single bureaucratic decision stands in the way of that. Whatever we've done to offend the credentialing authorities to the point where they will not give us the time to comply, it's not the fault of the staff, it's not the fault of the students. And the hundreds of lost jobs and thousands of lost futures massively outweigh anything that... Any complaint that could be made against us. So we're going to ask you to please stand with heart and hard work, and please join your voice with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maria Pyle?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Maria Pyle. I am a principal of the Equity Initiatives Program at Highlands Community Charter and Technical Schools. As you have heard, we are facing a major layoff that will adversely affect 10,000-plus students, hundreds of teachers, hundreds of staff, and the entire community. And so we need your support. We need you to stand with us. Over 620 employees have received a layoff notice, which will skyrocket unemployment in Sacramento and the surrounding areas. Additionally, we know that job losses reduce economic activity in the area. And this does not have to be. We need you to stand with us. In the Equity Initiatives Program, we are dedicated to transforming the lives of African-American and Latinx students, many of whom are single mothers, grandmothers, human trafficking victims, and justice-involved men and women. And they come to us unemployed and seeking to make a change in their life. They're looking for a second chance at education and economic mobility. And they're also looking for a chance at self... Reclaiming their self-dignity. When our students earn their high school diploma, they gain access to better-paying jobs, they gain confidence, and they even begin to vote. Our school is not just an academic program. It is a bridge, a bridge to hope, agency, and dignity. And when we...
Ms. Pyle, can you please wrap it up?
...seek to move back the... I'm sorry, I was thrown off. When we...
Sorry? Oh, you know what? I'm so sorry. You're on yellow. Forgive me.
Okay. Do I get some more time?
Yeah, 10 seconds.
Okay. Thank you so much. So when there's a decision to move back, to scale back by eliminating teachers, our program, we are pulling the bridge out from under those who need it most. And so I come before you to ask respectfully for you to stand with us so that we can continue to serve the most vulnerable student populations and continue to have a positive impact on our community. Martin Luther King Jr. said...
Maria, can you please wrap it up?
Yes. A time... The... Excuse me. The time is right. The time is always right to do what is right. I'm sorry. The time is always right to do what is right. And I'm asking you to do what is right, to stand with us. Thank you for your attention and your support.
Thank you, Maria. Rahula Babak?
I have my students with me. Good morning, honorable members of the Board. I'm Rahula Babak, a student journalist at Highlands Community Charter and Technical Schools. Highlands did not just... Did more than just teach English. It empowered its students, provided support to have a sufficient and stable life, and especially for Africans, the African women who were denied education in their home country. The women that suffered a lot back in the country, and they lost all their assets, their everything, and they made it to the United States to have a better life for themselves and their children. And Highlands was the only hope for those women. And they finally found a path forward at Highlands. In our classroom, we have two inspiring African women, the one whose husband is in prison right now, and she has seven to eight children, and the other one has a disabled husband. These two women are struggling and helping their children to take them to school, provide them all the support they need to get educated. And they came to Highlands two years ago, and they knew nothing about the culture, the law, and the language. But within the two years, they gradually and slowly learned a few words, and then they were able to understand and be able to read English. And finally, they were able to take the permit, the driving permit test, and they passed it. They were very excited and disalberated that happiness with all the other students in our classroom. But since they heard about Highlands is going to be closed, one of them fainted in the class. And she was lost. She was like, "I don't know where to go, what to do, and how could I support my kids." These two students are taking their children to schools. They walk them to schools every day. Sometimes even the one or two of their children, they miss school because they do not have transportation. The husband is in prison, the other one is disabled, they are not able to drive, and there is no one to support them. So Highlands was a hope for these students. So we're facing a major layoff that will deeply affect our students, staff, and entire community. This moment is critical, and we need support. We ask you to hear us and to stand with us. Highland was not just a school. It was a bridge to self-sufficiency and meaningful participation in a society. The closure of this vital educational institution has not only disrupted our learning journey for our students...
Mr. Babak, can you please wrap it up?
...but has also negatively affected our access to essential services and opportunities. Thank you very much for giving us the time to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Tori... Let's see. Tori Alai Niaizai?
We were all together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all the way down to Mr. Jawid?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Board members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ahmed Jawid, and I work in the Center for Workforce Solutions at Highlands Community Charter and Technical School. I immigrated to this country 10 years ago, and I know firsthand the struggles of trying to rebuild life from the ground up. That personal experience is what drives my passion for the work we do, and it's why I am deeply concerned about the recent changes affecting our school. I understand deeply the challenges facing many of our students. Today, I speak out of urgency and concern. Due to the changes in teacher credentialing, Highlands is being forced to lay off over 620 employees, 87% of our staff. This will devastate service and send unemployment skyrocketing in Sacramento and nearby communities. In my role with Workforce Solutions, I help students prepare for the... Prepare and find real jobs. We build resumes, prepare for interviews, connect students to employers, and provide job training that helps them immediately support themselves and their families. We don't just teach, we empower. We don't just talk about change, we make it happen. Through our career technical education and workforce program, we guide students directly into jobs. Removing these programs means fewer skilled workers and greater dependency. We have helped people to find careers, gain dignity, and build better lives. Without Highlands, thousands lose opportunities, and our community loses a vital lifeline. Please stand with us to protect adult education and fight for the future of our students and families. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Shawna Thiel?
Good morning, members. My name is Shawna Thiel, and I come before you today as both a proud graduate and a member... Staff member of Highlands Community Charter School. When I enrolled at Highlands, I was at a crossroad. I needed more than just an education. I needed hope, a fresh start, and someone to believe in me. That's exactly what I found with Highlands. Highlands didn't just help me earn the diploma, it helped me rebuild my life. And I'm proud to say I now serve the very community that once lifted me up. But today, I'm here with a heavy heart. Over 620 dedicated Highland employees are being laid off. These are real people, many of them former students like myself, who are now facing unemployment, uncertainty, and the inability to support their families. In a time when Sacramento's unemployment rate is already climbing, this isn't just another layoff, it's a local crisis. These cuts are going to hurt. They'll hurt the thousands of adult learners who rely on our school to finish their education. They'll hurt the families already living paycheck to paycheck. They'll hurt communities already stretched thin, and they'll erase years of progress that Highlands has made by giving people a second chance. This school has changed my life, and I've seen it do the same for so many others. It's not just a place to learn, it's a place where people are seen, supported, and given the dignity they deserve. So I'm asking you, as leaders of the city, to please stand with us, help protect these jobs, help preserve the opportunity Highlands gives so many and who would otherwise be left behind. Sacramento is better when we invest the second chances, and I'm living proof of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Raj Pele?
Good morning, Board members. I appreciate this opportunity to speak in front of you all. I'm a teacher at Highlands Community Charter Schools, and I've had the pleasure of serving our students for the past two years. My area of expertise is construction, and specifically metalworking and welding. If you look around us in our beautiful city, there's a lot of expansion and growth, and my job as an educator is to empower those students, specifically the underserved populations that we specialize in at Highlands. And it's been very rewarding to see the impact, the positive impact, that I get to be a part of as an educator, to see individuals build their confidence, to gain skills that are very relevant to the growth of our community. So in the recent changes happening, there's so much that's beyond my scope and understanding. I just see what's in front of me and the negative impact that's potentially... And the ripples that come from that. So my students, my fellow staff members, that you can... There's a big change, right? So my job here is to keep moving forward and be as impactful on the positive end. But in speaking to you all today is just a moment to ask for consideration on the negative impact that might affect our community, and our constituents, and our individuals. So thank you all for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Ahmad Shaqib Shakistabar? Shaqistabar? Yep.
Good morning, everybody, Board members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ahmad Shaqib Shakistabar. I'm from Afghanistan. So if I enrolled in the United States the first time, my English was zero. Believe me. Yeah, I am one of those students from Highlands that I'm starting from zero, coming in high school. I graduated the high school, graduated me from the high school, and I started the CTE program. So right now, I'm also in the program. I'm not graduated from that. So my meaning is that I appreciate that you are supporting all of us, all peoples that coming from another countries, and so we have hard time. And so the first time if I came in here, in my country, I'm post and graduating from engineering plumber. I worked as a plumber with the Army of America as a 16 years. And after that, if they bring me here, so my English was very, very slow, very low, very low. But right now, I need your support for me and like me, other peoples that they enroll in the United States, and they studying the Highlands community. All of our teachers support us, and they help us. So they reach out me up to here, maybe like me and other peoples. So once again, I need your support and stand with the Highlands, with us, and thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rachel Ditmore?
So I am here as the co-founder of City of Refuge in Sacramento, who, as you know, over the last 15 years, we've housed over 750 women and children, most of them, many of them, victims of human trafficking. This work has been my life's call and passion. Last year, the first partner asked if I would host an event at City of Refuge to talk about human trafficking. And I told the story of the ecosystem. In every community, we have ecosystems. The first time I went to Highlands, I called my husband, and I just cried all the way home, and I said, "Lauren, this is the dream. There are so many things here that we will never have to do because of what Highlands does every single day." We've replaced many front doors with systems. And we all understand that systems are so important, but there are two things that I believe matter that are infused in the foundation of Highlands, its belief and its belonging. When someone believes in us, there's that thing that takes us to the other side. You can walk into Highlands any single day, and you'll see Mr. Martinez with tattoos covered from his head, all the way down probably to the bottom of his toes, as he drops off his daughters at school at 5:30 in the morning and rides that bus, and he's sitting in that classroom. You see Flowers, who wasn't able to be there this morning, but with her permission, she wanted me to share this story with you. Two summers ago, her three children, one of them was killed, two of them were on life support for four months. She lived in a tent for four months outside of UC Davis, and every single day, she's coming back to life. Her mind is restoring because of the hope that is in her because of Highlands. Adult education is more than a degree and a diploma. It's a place where we invite people to believe again, and we give them belonging. If you haven't seen it, see it. But what I'm telling you is it works, and we're seeing lives transformed every single day.
Thank you. Barbara Ram?
Thank you. First, I would like to say, last time I was here, I want to apologize to Supervisor Kennedy because I was pretty rude to you, and I regret doing that, so, thank you. Still, it's not an excuse. So I also wanted to say, although I'm not here for Highlands, I've spent many, many years as a volunteer and a contributor to St. John's Program for Real Change. And when those women graduate from Highlands, the celebration is incredible. It just changes lives unbelievably, like 50-year-old women, 60-year-old women who finally get their high school diploma. It's the biggest celebration of all. Anyway, I'm here because I was at the Sacramento Sheriff's Community Review Commission, and when the sheriffs presented their report, on page three, it says, "There's an annual report, and there's reference to Government Code 7072." And in Government Code 7072, there are many, many specifications that are supposed to be in the report, like a summary of how the military equipment was used and the purpose of the use, a summary of any complaints, the results of any internal... I can't read it right now because my phone is freaking out, but I couldn't find the specifications of that government code in the report. And when I asked the sheriff, "Is there another report, or is this the only report that you have?" And he told me, "His report goes to county council, and then county council, if they agree that the report is legal, then that's it." So I called county council, and I asked them, "Is there another report that includes the information that's supposed to be in the report?" And they said they would get back to me this week, so I hope that they do, but I'm just letting... But I'm just letting you know that the information that's supposed to be in the report is not in the report. And I don't know how you could make a decision for, say, let's say, a $500,000 bear cat vehicle without the actual data behind why they need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Isabel Amesqua.
And I'm sorry if I'm looking down and reading off my phone. Good eve, good afternoon, morning, chairperson and members of the board. My name is Isabel Amesqua, and I'm the Student Onboarding and Records Manager at Highlands Community Charter and Technical Schools, also known as Highlands. For over a decade, Highlands has served more than 13,000 students annually, many of whom are immigrants, refugees, and low-income adults, offering education and workforce training that helps them overcome systemic barriers. Due to a recent reinterpretation of credentialing rules, the Commission on Teacher Credentialing, our teachers must now hold only K-12 credentials to qualify for funding. This has led to a mass layoff of over 620 employees, spiking unemployment across Sacramento and neighboring areas. These job losses reduce household income, local spending, and overall academic activity. The impact on students is equally severe. Our capacity is being cut to just 3,300 students or just about. Many thousands will lose access to education, job training, and a pathway to stability without Highlands. Many of these will be left without options. Highlands also serves a key referral agency, you guys all may know, Department of Human Assistance, also known as DHA. If we are forced to close or reduce services, over 8,000 DHA recipients will need to be reassigned to already overburdened service providers disrupting essential support systems. My phone keeps messing up, I'm so sorry. This is not a good idea. As a first-generation Mexican-American and the daughter of immigrants, I know the life-changing power of education. I respectfully urge the board to work with state agencies to help Highlands continue serving the most vulnerable in our community. Thank you for your time and your commitment to Sacramento County. We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Niamatullah Sultani.
Good morning, everyone. Good to see everyone. My name is Niamatullah Sultani. I'm from Afghan community. What I do with other organizations, I'm not going to mention here. So the reason I'm here today is, you guys heard all Highland stuff here. I'm not Highland stuff here. I'm just from Afghan community, representing Afghan community. And the reason I'm here to support education. Support of education means a lot of Afghans, men and women, are participating Highlands Charter School ESL classes. And the reasons Highlands is more important for the Afghan community is, first, they have professional teachers, they have classrooms close to Afghan community, and Afghan women basically going to that classes is not only education for them, it's a part-time job as well. So what I heard recently from the news and from Highlands members and students, when we had a meetings in Afghan community, they ask us that we know the path to take and support the Highlands and the students. And that's the reason I'm here today, to help Highlands and the student, and Afghan students that participating in Highlands classes. These women's participating to Highlands classes, they're learning everything. They connect to other Afghans as well. They came in like two, three years ago, and they facing culture shocks, stuff like that. When they see other Afghan, they came before them, they help each other. And this, if we closing these classes, we don't have option B for them. We don't have other education centers that have that many classes and location and accepting that many students. And what that's saying is, if we not reconsider this one, domestic violence will increase. And these people only have option for right now to learn English. If they get a job with Afghan businesses, we probably have like 60-plus Afghan businesses. There's like 52,000 Afghans live in this community. So instead of opening one door for them, why not have 10 door open for them?
Mr. Sultani, can you wrap it up, please?
Of course. That's all I need. I need your guys' support to support the education. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like Highlands is a very special place for many people. We have some board members that would like to speak. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We can't bring up or discuss items that are not on the agenda because they weren't agendized for discussion, and so nobody knew that we were going to talk about that. But I would like to say that from what I've heard this morning, I'm very moved. I think that Highlands values align with my own relative to a hand-up pathway for folks to become more fully-realized, fully-fledged citizens. I know that there is a concerted targeting of charter schools generally from the legislature and from state education associations that are influenced by certain special interests. But I would like some sort of report on the background of what's happening for these folks in any way that we can. I know we don't have any jurisdiction over the CTC or others, but anything that we can do, even within county departments, to try and stopgap this situation.
Supervisor, we'll reach out to Highlands and have that conversation with them and bring something back to the board. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I echo the sentiment of Supervisor Hume. I am pretty familiar with Highlands, have visited multiple locations, have seen firsthand the transformational work that Highlands does with certainly the refugee communities. So I thank the members of the Afghan community for being out here, other low-income communities, justice-involved individuals, and your partnerships with employers and nonprofits. So I already reached out to my staff to reach out to Highlands to better understand this issue because I was not aware of this and I was doing some research up here. So we'll certainly be following up and look forward to that follow-up discussion here at the board about this issue. Thank you.
Again, thank you for all those that came to speak. Oh, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Won't repeat what my colleagues have said, other than to say that I completely agree with the sentiment. Highlands is actually an important part of District 2, the work they do at La Familia, the work that they do with SEDA on Florin Road. I mean, it's an integral part of the South Sacramento community. So I appreciate the county executive for his words and offer to reach out. Thank you.
Okay, and for the speakers that I cut off at the beginning, sorry. I started out on fifth gear and I had to bring it down to first. So forgive me for that. All right, oh, we have one more request to speak.
Supervisor Rosario, thank you. Whoever the spokesperson is for Highlands, if they can speak with Ms. Kathari, that would be great. She's going to make herself available right now. And if they can trade business cards, that would be great.
And Ms. Kathari's in the back. All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Yes. Item 2 is the Presentation of Resolution Declaring Childcare a Public Priority and Recognizing Its Role in Strengthening the Economy and Supporting Working Families.
Did not know you were going to be here.
We haven't seen each other in a long time.
I know. Law school buddy. All right, so normally, first of all, I want to thank Supervisor Serna for tapping me to take his place as he's out ill for this important resolution as he's the chair of not only the board but of First Five. I know this is important to him. And normally, I shorten my reading of a resolution. This one's tough, though, because it's all really important. So I'm going to ask you to bear with me, and I'm going to read a number of wherethes. "The Council for a Strong America issued a report in early 2023 which details the lack of infant toddler childcare costs the United States at $122 billion annually in lost earnings, productivity, and revenue, including an estimated $1 to $1.2 billion in lost economic potential to Sacramento County. A family living in Sacramento County must pay an average of $16,128 per year for infant care and $13,618 for preschoolers childcare, making childcare one of the largest expenses faced by families, second only to housing. Approximately 47% of women in Sacramento County report having to leave work or reduce their work hours due to lack of affordable childcare, exacerbating workforce shortages across critical industries, including education, healthcare, and public safety. More than 60% of the childcare workforce in Sacramento County earns wages so low that they qualify for public assistance programs such as CalFresh and Medi-Cal despite providing essential early education services. Sacramento County is home to over 130,000 children under the age of six, yet licensed childcare only serves approximately a third of this population, leaving thousands of working families without reliable childcare options. Sacramento County includes language in its 2025/26 state and federal policy priorities to quote, 'support legislation to maintain or expand funding for subsidized childcare and early learning preschool for income-eligible working families.' Now therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors joins the Child Action, Inc., Sacramento County's alternative payment program and resource and referral agency, First Five, the Sacramento County Childcare Coalition, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce, local childcare providers, business leaders, and community organizations in advocating for comprehensive and collaborative solutions to address the childcare crisis. This is something that I am guaranteeing has affected everyone that's sitting up here and most people who are in the audience at some point or another. It's something that we have to give our attention to. It impacts all of us, our entire community. And so I thank the board for indulging me in presenting this resolution. And I will present this resolution at this time, and would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I would.
All right.
Oh, good morning, supervisors. And thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. It is great to see you again. Yes, we went to law school together. He finished, I didn't. Good morning, my name is Adonai Mack. I serve as the CEO of Child Action, Sacramento County's alternative payment and resource and referral agency. I want to begin by thanking all of you, especially Supervisor Serna for his leadership in bringing this important resolution before the board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of this resolution recognizing childcare as a public policy issue and a priority. We appreciate the board's leadership in recognizing childcare as a priority through words and actions. A few examples include $1 million in CARES Act funding, which provided one-time stipends to 830 licensed childcare programs, and $950,000 in American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds, which support 313 programs with stipends to help retain the childcare workforce. This support has helped sustain providers and expand childcare facilities across the entire county. Every day, our agency works with families, and you heard some of the families. We work a lot with our Afghan community, specifically around the Arden and Highlands area and across the entire Sacramento County who are struggling to find affordable healthcare. Sacramento County is home to 130,000 children under the age of six, and yet licensed childcare services serves only about one-third of them, leaving thousands of working families without reliable options. Providing critical support to parents who depend on childcare to stay in the workforce is critically important. Families pay, as you heard, an average of about $16,000 per year in infant care, making childcare even more expensive than housing. This has just been confirmed and reflects a system where costs of care are rising twice as fast as the rate of inflation. According to the Council of a Strong America, Sacramento County loses an estimated $1 to $1.2 billion every year in economic potential because parents leave the workforce or reduce their hours because they cannot access childcare. This resolution signals that Sacramento County understands childcare's essential infrastructure and critical to families, small businesses, and the broader economy. At Child Action, we see this firsthand. We have invested in what investing in childcare looks like. This past year, we distributed $127 million in childcare subsidies that support and help parents stay in the workforce, sustain providers and small businesses, and give children a strong, safe foundation to grow. We believe that this investment can contribute up to $2 billion in long-term regional economic impact. By passing this resolution, you all affirm that childcare is vital to keeping parents working, businesses hiring, and our economy growing faster. You, with you, joining Child Action, First Five Sacramento, the Sacramento Metro Chamber, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, the Sacramento County Office of Education, and all of our partners in calling for investments and policies that are needed to strengthen our childcare infrastructure. So we thank you for your leadership. We appreciate this. Supervisor Kennedy, thank you for speaking and sharing this. And we appreciate Supervisor Serna for leading in this. And we thank the entire board for your commitment in making childcare a priority. So thank you.
Thank you. And we do have one request.
Let me only say that Sacramento County needs you doing what you do much more than we need another lawyer.
And we do have one request to speak on this item. Frisha Moore.
Hi, my name is Frisha Moore. I own two preschools in Out Grove. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys were all aware of the importance of this. Centers like mine are being highly impacted by TK right now, and there is a shortage of infant care. We're not able to sustain our programs without programs like Child Action. They are keeping my business alive right now. So I just want to make sure that everybody here knows how important that is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, our next item is Presentation of Resolution Recognizing the Hmong American Heritage Day.
Well, come down here. We have an unusually beautifully dressed audience today. Okay, well, we are proud to be joined by half of the Hmong community in Sacramento County. May 14th, the anniversary of the fall of Long Cheng, a United States Hmong airbase in Laos during the Laotian Civil War, where the Hmong fought alongside the United States against the communist forces of North Vietnam, also known as the Secret War, from 1961 to 1975. May 14th, 1975, was the last airlift evacuation of Hmong soldiers and families from Laos to a refugee camp in Thailand. The United States is now home to over 300,000 Hmong Americans, with over 90,000 in California, the largest Hmong population of any state. This year commemorates five decades of the Hmong people's resilience, honoring their journey from Southeast Asia, their sacrifices during the Second War, the Secret War in Laos, and the resettlement in the United States. The County of Sacramento celebrates and supports the Hmong community in preserving their culture, traditions, cuisine, and art as they contribute to the social, political, and economic makeup of our country and nation as our soldiers, firefighters, educators, nurses, doctors, lawyers, athletes, elected officials, and more. Therefore, be it resolved that the County of Sacramento recognizes Hmong Americans for their notable accomplishments and continued contributions to this country and nation, and recognizes May 14th, 2025, as the date annually thereafter, and that date annually thereafter, as Hmong American Heritage Day. This is incredibly important. This is incredibly important. The Hmong people that have come to our community have made our community so much richer than it was before they came. I know that when I was on the Board of Education in Sacramento, I championed establishing a school that was tailored to educate Hmong students because at the time, the Hmong population, Hmong students, was the fastest-growing gap in achievement in our educational system, and we had to do something. We got criticized for that as being segregationists and other things, but what it did was it realized that we don't have time, the community doesn't have time, and certainly our Hmong children don't have time, for us to catch up and do the right thing. So we have to do the right thing now. We've done that. We see that achievement gap narrowing, and all of the cultural benefits that the Hmong people have brought to Sacramento County, particularly in South Sacramento and District Two, warms my heart, and it's great to be here and see you all here today. Thank you very much. Would anybody like to speak?
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy for presenting this resolution for our community here in Sacramento County. I am with Hmong Innovating Politics, and we are just so grateful to be in community, not just our Hmong community, but with our broader community here in Sacramento. And this resolution is an opportunity for us to be seen and to be heard and to be loud. And we were loud out there this morning. We had a press conference, and I hope that you all will check it out because we shared a lot of important stories about how we came here and what we're needing at this time and how we want to move forward. And that's moving forward in a community where we are cared for, where we can thrive in education and healthcare. And so, moving forward, this is an opportunity for us to look ahead at the next 50 years and collaborate with each other to really heal those inequities that still exist in our community. So I thank you Supervisor Kennedy, as well as the County Board of Supervisors for your commitment and support for our Hmong and Southeast Asian communities as we commemorate the 50th year of our arrival here in the United States. Thank you so much, and I hope that you will also join us this Saturday, May 17th, at Elk Grove Regional Park for our Hmong American Day celebration event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get the resolution up here.
People Power of three. One, two, three.
Now I'm going to take a nap.
Through the chair?
We have one request to speak.
So before everybody files out, I did want to thank all of you. I want to pile on with Supervisor Kennedy's sentiments, certainly appreciate his leadership, and also thank all of you for making the time to be here today. Everything that's in that resolution that Supervisor Kennedy mentioned is absolutely true. You've added immensely to the richness of our community, and I thank you. And I think the intentional support for the Hmong community is, I think, something I hope that we can learn from that with other new arrivals, particularly the Afghan community refugees, and would appreciate any input or assistance you can provide in that endeavor too. Thank you.
All right, well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Yes, item four is the Presentation of Child Safety Forward Champion of Prevention Award. Janay Eustis.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much Supervisors for the time today, a time to honor the legacy and former First Five Commissioner, Dr. Steve Worts. In this presentation, we will honor the past, the present, and the future of prevention. For those of you who don't know, Dr. Worts was a developmental psychiatrist, public health leader, and Sacramento County advocate whose legacy shaped prevention across our county. As a founder, a founding member of the Sacramento Child Safety Forward Prevention Cabinet, he brought compassion, vision, and data-driven leadership to everything he touched. His tireless advocacy helped institutionalize prevention as a core value to our public systems, inspiring the creation of this award to recognize champions who carry his work forward. Today, we are going to honor Michelle Caigas. In the year 2000, Sacramento County had 5,457 children in foster care. I was one of them. Today, in 2025, that number has decreased to just 865. That's an 84%. That's an 84% reduction, not by chance, but by choice. It's because of the results of leaders like Michelle, dedicated DCFAS staff who believe in families, kin, and community, who align their practices in your investments in prevention. It's because of community, our communities, having safety nets of prevention in their local neighborhoods. Michelle served as Director of the Department of Child and Family and Adult Services, where she expanded mental health, CPS, senior services, and supported equity-focused campaigns like Safe Sleep Baby 2.0 and the Black Child Legacy Campaign, and helped to launch the Prevention Cabinet. Her work centered community voice, equity, and data-driven systems change, leaving a lasting impact for generations to come. With that, we thank you, Michelle, and I'd like to present you the award.
Welcome back, Michelle.
Thank you so much. Wow, it's great to be back and nice to see everyone. Thank you, Janay, and to the Child Safety Forward Cabinet for this incredible honor. I think most of you know that prevention was the primary focus throughout my career from a number of angles, and so to have had any impact through my service, I'm glad that it's in the area of prevention. We know it's better for kids and families, services are effective, and they're fiscally prudent investment. Pay a little now, pay two to three times much later if we don't fund it now. Sorry, you know, I'm going to give a spiel about prevention. And then I also, it's just made even sweeter by the fact that this is honoring the legacy of Dr. Worts. Steve was an amazing man, very passionate, compassionate, and helped improve prevention services throughout our community. He was data-driven. He never hesitated to give me a ring when he saw data that indicated our department could make some improvements. And as busy as he was, he always took a call for me seeking input and advice, so really grateful, even sweeter, that it is in his honor. So thank you, thank you all very much.
Michelle?
Michelle?
There's someone on the phone for you. Hang on a sec.
Well, thank you so much for that. Protecting the Future. Today, we're in the middle of a crisis. As I'm sure most of you know, our social services are currently under attack. Just last week, the CAP Center received notice that our AmeriCorps programs, serving 4,500 families in this community, were all terminated abruptly. It also affected our AmeriCorps members here locally over 30 and our own CAP Center staff. These programs provided home visitation, foster youth mentoring, Afghan support, as we saw so many of them coming here today, and parenting support. The work of prevention continues, but it is at risk, and we must heed a call to service and serve our communities now more than ever. Looking ahead, with new leadership across the CAP Center as well as DCFAS with Shelby Boston, who has already given countless hours of partnership to us and our prevention networks, we affirm this commitment to uphold the values of the award presented: excellence, equity, and impact. We will continue investing in prevention, not just as a strategy, but as a promise to ensure that all children and families are supported and thriving in our community. Thank you so much. Thank you, Janay. Can I have our staff that are here? Can the staff come and join for a photo? You all too, if you'd like.
It's very meaningful. All right, well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Yes, for your next items, we're on the consent calendar now, and that's items two through 47, and I do not have any notes for the board today.
All right. Anyone wanting to pull an item? Or entertain a motion? Oh, there we go. All right. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just make a quick comment on items 18 and 19, and maybe, Madam Clerk, if you could just read them together.
I sure will.
Great.
Item 18 is to approve authority to apply for funding from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments for County State Funding Program, and item 19 is to approve a resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2526 funded by Senate Bill 1.
Thank you, and I asked to read them together because they're inextricably linked. In regard to item 18, that's the STIP funding, and I just want to give a shout out to our DOT staff and also SECOG for changing things with respect to some of our competitive funding. The STIP is, it's a relatively small portion of some of the funds that flow through SECOG, but this coming directly to Sacramento County provides us, I think, with a level of certainty with some of these funds. It's really in the big scheme of things, not a lot, and I'm looking at you, Mac, because I don't see anybody else from DOT here, but thanks for your work on this. And it's related to, obviously, to our SB 1 funding, because as we know, it's woefully inadequate to meet the needs that we have in Sacramento County with such a massive $1.4 billion maintenance backlog, and it's especially inadequate in this day and age when we're still so over-reliant on gas tax revenue in the state of California. But also appreciate DOT staff in being so willing to work with me and my offices, and I assume all the supervisors' offices, with engaging with constituents about the complexities of transportation funding and the finite resources that we have, and some of the tough decisions we make, and how to prioritize where that money goes. So just wanted to call out DOT staff, thank them again for their work on both of these items, and of course, I'm very supportive of both of them. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I have questions on item eight and item 32, please.
Okay. Do you mind if I read them both at the same time?
However, you'd like to do it, it's fine.
Item eight is to approve bid awards to EE Gilbert Construction, Roden Builders Incorporated, North Star Construction and Engineering, Staples Construction, Better Enterprises, and X-Bond Development for the job orders that are listed. And then for item 32, this is the authority to execute a new expenditure agreement with Equity and Wellness Institute.
Thank you. So on item number eight, first of all, I just want to say I support the use of this mechanism. It seems like it's a pretty efficient way to award contracts, to have pre-approved bidders and pre-approved set prices for the work that they're going to perform. My question is, I've never seen this award criteria figure before. Judging by the table of the bids received, I assume the lower the award criteria figure, the higher the ranking of the respondent? Okay? And then my second question is, with respect to this, and just in generally, do we have any local vendor preference that we apply to bids received? And I only ask that because it looks like there were, of the six that we're going to be awarding to, the closest one is Yuba City or maybe Martinez, and the Mather, Roseville, and Sacramento bidders are excluded. They did not meet the cut. So do we have anything that gives any preference to local firms?
Supervisor, we do have local bidding preferences. I'm not sure if it applies to the JOC. I know Josh Green is behind me. Maybe he can come up and speak to it real quick.
Good morning. Good morning. Josh Green, Director of General Services. Supervisor Hume, thanks for that question. I'm not certain on if there's local vendor preference for the job order contracts, but I can get that information, and I'll make sure that that becomes available to you.
Okay, great, thank you. It looks like the attorney has chimed in.
Under public contracting for public works contracts such as JOC, there are not allowed to be local preferences.
Well, there it is.
There you go.
Okay.
We have local preferences for procurement contracts for goods and services, which are allowed, but under public contracting codes, it is not allowed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And in response to your first question there, you are accurate, and that the lower the value, the higher the score essentially.
Okay, thank you. And then under item 32, without grabbing the third rail here too much, I know that the federal administration has taken umbrage with these types of efforts, but it looks like this particular award is to chase down state money. Is that correct?
I will have Shelby Boston, DCFAS Director, come up and talk about that.
Okay, and well, Shelby, will you be able also to answer questions about why we skipped down the line on the award? Okay.
Good morning. Shelby Boston, Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services Director. Happy to answer your question. So this contract is actually aligned with the requirements of our family's First Prevention Services Act work. We're doing that preventive, early work as we prepare for implementation, so it is a mix of state and federal dollars. This has not been impacted as of yet.
Okay. Let's hope it doesn't get impacted.
Agreed. And to your second question?
My second question is, we went from the highest-scoring respondent and skipped them supposedly because the second-to-highest has better familiarity with the region?
They're actually a local provider. They're here in Sacramento.
No further questions? Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question to the board? We have an 11 o'clock item, but if it pleases the board, you can take the next item because it's not scheduled, unless you want to take a recess until 11 o'clock.
We can move forward with the boards and commissions also?
We can take the boards and commissions as well.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, so that is item number 57, and I'll give you guys a minute to get your notes out. Your continuing nominations to the following: to May 20th, the Casumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, First Five Sacramento Commission, Galt Arno Cemetery District, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, and the Southeast Area- Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to June 3rd, the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Elk Grove Casumnes Cemetery District, Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento, Metro, Air Park, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, and the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. Continuing to June 10th, the Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, and the Sheriff Community Review Commission. Okay, and for your first item, this is the County Service, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes.
D5 would like to nominate Kelly Nelson. Do I need to waive the process?
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
All right, unanimous vote with those members present, and then we'll move on to the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Chief recommends continuing this item until May 20th.
Thank you. Fair Oaks Community Cemetery District. Madam Chair?
I don't have comments on that one.
I have a note here from your office to appoint Evan Curry.
Okay.
Okay. And then we have the Loc Management Corporation, aka the Association.
Chief recommends continuing this item until June 10th.
Okay. And then Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council.
I don't have comments on that.
I have notes from your staff to continue to June 3rd.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then we have the Public Health Advisory Board.
Chief recommends nominating Tiffany Charles to the Public Health Advisory Board, and continue the remainder to June 3rd.
Thank you. Rio Linda Elverda, Community Planning Advisory Council, Madam Chair. I have a note to continue this to June 3rd.
Perfect.
All right, and that concludes nominations. So we still have to wait until 11, unless it, the chair would like to move on to item 49 and come back.
Item 49.
Sure, we can proceed.
Okay, and I just want to make sure the staff's here. Okay, so for item 49, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. Approval of application for Home Key Plus funds from the State Department of Housing and Community Development in the amount of $31,073,600, and conditional loan commitment with CSH, Elsie Housing, or related entity in the amount of $3.7 million for the South Sacramento Motel 6 project located at 7407 Elsie Drive.
Good morning, Christine.
Good morning. Christine Wecker with SHRA. The Home Key Plus program, which was modeled after the Home Key program, provides funding to convert motels and other non-residential structures to permanent supportive housing for the homeless. To date, SHRA has applied for and received Home Key funds for six motel conversions, and Home Key Plus also allows for construction of new units. Voters approve Proposition 1, which funds the behavioral health services and housing for homeless, and a $2.1 billion Home Key Plus notice of funding availability, or NOFA, utilizing these funds was issued in December for housing, and applications are being accepted through May. This report recommends approval of Home Key Plus application for $31 million and approval of a $3.7 million loan consisting of home, CDPG, and affordable housing funds for the proposed South Sacramento Motel 6 project on Elsie Avenue near Stockton Boulevard. The rehabilitation project will turn the existing 122 motel rooms into 59 affordable one-bedroom units plus one manager's unit, and all units will have kitchenettes, and the property will include a community room, laundry, bicycle storage, and residence service offices. The developer is California Housing, or sorry, California Supportive Housing, or CSH, who is currently developing a Home Key project in Oakland, but this will be their first project in Sacramento. The property management company will be Jon Stewart Company, who is currently managing many permanent supportive housing homeless projects in our area, and the development will have 24/7 desk coverage and receive project-based vouchers. Lutheran Social Services will be providing 15 hours of residence services in addition to three full-time onsite case managers. Fund reward notices will be released this summer, and construction will commence shortly thereafter and must be complete within 12 months. So in conclusion, staffs recommend approval of the Home Key Plus application and funding for this project, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Vice Chair. First, Christine and Ms. Dozier, thank you for being here early with our goofy new system. You were able to fill in, so that was great. Appreciate that. Did you have an opportunity since we had the, well, let me back up. First, I also want to thank you for sticking with this project. It's been a challenge, and, you know, I really appreciate your tenacity in keeping with it. The, did you have a chance to look into whether or not VASH vouchers will be available for this project?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. Absolutely. We had a conversation with the VA recently, just the last couple days, and they are very interested in placing some of their clients at the property. They would like to use more tenant-based veterans vouchers than project-based, but they are very interested in placing.
Great, thank you. This project has gotten support from the community. It's taking a motel that was actually the target of the district attorney, Anne Marie Schubert, because it was such a problem property for so many years, that turned into a change in policy nationwide for Motel 6. So this has a long history. This isn't going to be a great improvement while also providing housing that's badly needed in the area. So thank you again for your efforts, and I will move the project.
Second.
And just for the record, we do not have any public comments on this item. Where am I? Here we go. Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, well, the clerk, please call the next item, or do we have to wait?
We can go, if we can go to the next item, this, item 50 is an annual update.
Okay.
From the CAP, okay. So item 50 is the annual update from the Sacramento County Medi-Cal Dental Advisory Committee. Are they with us today?
Dr. Cortez, I want to see Julie.
Okay.
If I move down, we'll wait for her. Is that right? I'm happy to, yeah.
I'm going to bring up your PowerPoint.
Thank you, yes.
She's going to raise the microphone.
Perfect, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, supervisors. Lovely to see you, and I'm honored to be here with my colleague Julie, who's the Vice Chair of the Managed Dental Advisory Committee here for SAC County. And I'm just giving you the annual update. I'm going to sort of scamper through the slides, if I may. We were created with an authority under AB 1467 in 2012, and we have a cosponsorship or convening role with the State Department of Healthcare Services, Sacramento Department of Health Services, and the Division of Public Health, to whom we owe a great debt of gratitude for all the work and coordinating that happens. It's an interesting group. We actually meet actively with the Department of Healthcare Services around dental services. Our goal is to improve access and to improve the quality of the Medi-Cal dental care for Sacramento County residents. We provide oversight and guidance to improve dental utilization rates, the delivery of oral health and dental care services, including prevention and education, of which there are challenges, for dental managed care and fee-for-service systems, of which we have both here in the county. It's a very mixed group, and a really strong group. The strongest part, of course, is to my right, the First Five Sacramento Commission, Sacramento County Department of Health Services, Sacramento Public Health Officer, Alta California Regional Center is well represented, Sacramento District Dental Society, California Dental Association. Interesting that we have a statewide association. We have beneficiaries representing head start and grandparents of oral health beneficiaries. We have our community health centers, five of them represented in this group. We have three dental providers who serve the Medicaid population in part, none of them in total. We have a pediatrician, a family practice doctor on the group, registered dental hygienist, public health advisory board member, two advocates, three members of large, and a dental plan representative from the three dental plans that we have here in the county. They are non-voting members.
Do you have something?
Please do.
I think it's, it's one of those committees where people wanted to get on, and so this last year, one of the things that we did was add three, three additional seats to McDAC because we had so many people wanting to be a part of what we do. And good morning, I'm Julie Galella with First Five.
Thank you. Janine?
No, no, you.
Just to give you a sense of the scale, scope of responsibility we're talking about here, we have 647,117 beneficiaries in the Medicaid program, in the oral health Medicaid program here in the county, of whom 248,000 are under 21 and 398,000 are over 21. Dental managed care, which is the predominant model here in SAC County, accounts for 614,000 of those beneficiaries, with 235,000 under 21, 378,000 over 21. Sacramento County and LA County are the only two dental managed care counties in the state of California, and you'll see in the slides later, I'll try and disambiguate, you'll see the comparisons with the two dental managed care counties. We do have a small fee-for-service population of 32,000. I say small compared to the overall, because that's just under 5% of oral health beneficiaries in the Medicaid program here in SAC County who are in the fee-for-service program, with 12,000 who are less than 21 years of age and 20,000 who are older. Typically, these are persons who are severely disabled, who are in a, in a care facility, who have reason to have a kind of just access to whoever, or they're young people who are, you know, let's say, in a residential facility or under supervised care. We have three plans, and we have a planned procurement process here in SAC County. So we, in 2024, Department of Healthcare Services had three plans, which were Access Dental Plan, Health Net, and Liberty Dental. This is an important clarification for you. In our Managed Dental Advisory Committee, it's kind of different from the Health Authority Commission, we have an active role in deciding whether we think our plan partners are actually adequate for our community. And in this case, the state of California has stepped in and discontinued the contract with Access Dental Plan. That will end June 30th this year, and that plan will be replaced by Dentacquest. And Dentacquest has been active on our committee since the reprocurement and since they were informed that they were coming in. So even in 2012, when this commission was created, we, literally, the first thing that the committee did was actually can one of the plans in the county for poor performance. So it's kind of an interesting committee because there is an active sense of us scrutinizing the plans and looking for higher quality and better access to a network in the, in oral health domain. We also have, for the fee-for-service patients, Gainwell is the fiduciary, and this is a massive national entity, and they were brought in to replace Delta Dental, who the state didn't think was performing adequately. Our accomplishments over the last few years have been to monitor and assess outcomes and metrics to effectively plan for improvement. We've been really monitoring the impact of the increasing number of Medi-Cal beneficiaries, both children and adults, to ensure timely access and utilization for dental services. We've established multiple work groups. We kindly received money from, I think, the board, from First Five, to have another sort of epic oral health review by Barbara Avid and Associates. The original one that she did back in 2010 or so led First Five Commission to actually commission five or six new health centers for children, for oral health. And so Barbara Avid's work has been incredible, and this time round, we had her add adults into her purview and look at adult oral health access as well. And we've participated in development of our county oral health strategic plan and needs assessment. In terms of our accomplishments in the last year, the, we've been engaging our stakeholders and decision-makers to promote dental health access, care quality, and utilization of services. We've been convening local stakeholders to determine strategies for improvement. We've expanded our stakeholder accountability by adjusting our bylaws and being more inclusive. We provided McDAC member representation on the Health Authority Commission, thank you. We provided regional stakeholders the opportunity to bring dental issues to discussion and problem-solving in action, which can be quite lively at times. We've worked collaboratively with the Department of Healthcare Services. Again, typically, the person in charge of oral health for DHCS is active in our meetings, which, again, says a lot about this, this group. With county public health, the three dental plans, California Department of Public Health, and we're addressing performance measures and really looking at the managed care delivery system. There's always this question about which is better, fee-for-service or managed care, and we're, we're able to kind of look at those data. Also importantly, we're working with Early Smile Sacramento Program, which is our school-based oral health assessments. I'd love to take a moment to talk about that, and I will, but just, here's the summary of Barbara Avid's last project and what we've done with it. She finalized the project in December of 2022. There were 17 recommendations. We actually broke into committees and we plowed through all 17 of the recommendations. We kind of looked at what were the most important ones for our community, and we, we created work groups to work on each of them. And the four main categories that we came up with were an oral health equity work group. This ensures equity in Medi-Cal dental care and pursues policy change accordingly. These are active groups, meeting a number of times between our quarterly meetings. A provider network adequacy work group. This is checking accuracy and adequacy in provider network, including, you know, providers who are still on the roster, who have actually died. We're doing secret shopping. We're looking to see, are people actually taking Medi-Cal or saying that they're taking Medi-Cal? And we're working to improve access to care for Medi-Cal dental members. The Oral Healthcare Integration Work Group is really looking at how we work with CalAim and other services. So for example, persons who are in substance use in a recovery center, for example, are they getting into oral health? Are we meshing with programs where a person might be more likely to be motivated by the counseling staff, for example, to get into oral health care? And then probably the most lively group is the General Anesthesia Work Group. You'd think there's a sleeper, but this is a very active group because there is a paucity of operatories in the local hospitals for oral surgeries. And so we've been working very closely with the health systems. Shriners most recently is stepping in. Cal-North State has talked about maybe developing some additional operation space for the oral surgeons. And you see that, you see that in the absence of a lot of prevention, which you'll see in some of the data, kids' mouths and adults' mouths are getting worse, and so typically more surgery is needed. There are also questions about anesthesia, because historically, persons with developmental disabilities have been given general anesthesia just to get routine flu shots and routine cleanings. And so if that's going to happen, are we integrating all the medical care they need so that there's just one time when they get everything? And also, is that the best practice? Are there other sedation techniques we can use that don't involve something as dangerous as a general anesthesia? Here's some data. I'll walk you through the first one, just to kind of guide you to what you're looking at. The, the color coding in the header shows the light blue is our geographic managed care model here in Sacramento County. The yellow or orange is the LA County Plan, Health Plan, and the purple is actually fee for service, but not for Sacramento County. It is fee for service for the whole of the state. So that's 56 counties' worth of fee for service. And so it can be a bit misleading. We don't typically get good access to our own fee-for-service data here in the county. When we've seen it, our GMC model, our managed care model, seems to be outpacing fee-for-service on every marker. But let me walk you through this. This is the annual dental visits for all persons 0 to 20. And so what you see, the dark bar- And so what you see, the dark bar represents the actual number of people, and the light bar represents the potential number of people. So in this case, in 2019, 96,748 beneficiaries of that age group accessed care out of a potential of 221,000. Okay, so for us, that meant that only 43.7% of the overall population in 2019 in that age group was accessing care. You can see it's not actually improved. We've got a larger population with the same percentage of persons accessing care in the 0 to 20 age group.
One second, we have Supervisor Hume.
Yeah, if I can just drill down into this slide a little bit. The population that isn't, that is eligible but not accessing, do you think they're just going without, or are they receiving care elsewhere and maybe don't realize that they're eligible?
If they were receiving care elsewhere, for those, the codes that would be billed for would show up, they're not receiving care.
Would that come under the fee-for-service component?
Yeah, they're not receiving care.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So these, this is the opportunity. Thanks. So if you look at the same, the same annual dental visits for adults 21 up, you'll see that an even, thank you, you'll see that an even lower number of adults have been in care. Do remember that in 2008, I believe, the adult dental benefit in Medicaid was just completely taken away in the state of California during the fiscal crisis. So one of our options in the state, or any state, when there's a crisis in Medicaid is to limit the benefit. And in this case, we limited adult benefit and removed it entirely. We had a partial restoration of the benefit in 2014, and then a full restoration of the benefit in 2018. And what you see in these data are exactly how little adult care we have in the county as a result. And my organization, WellSpace Health, is one of the organizations that doesn't do enough adult. We're all complicit in that. Actually, I think we do less than most of the other health centers. So this is a great opportunity for us because you can see that in 2023, only 20% of adult beneficiaries actually accessed routine care. Now we're looking at preventive services. And what you can see here is that our accessing of preventive services here in SAC County is only at about 37, 38% in 2023. Lots of opportunity here. And we have an administration now that's talking about making America healthy again, and is talking about how we spend Medicaid on prevention and how we prevent these later consequences. And I think we have an opportunity here to really step in and see if we can push for more prevention. And so the, again, our committee is talking quite a lot about how to do that. Again, here's adults.
Can I say one more thing just about the children? So the rates on the other slider for 0 to 20, but if you looked at 0 to 5-year-olds, it's even lower. It's like 20% of those children had a preventive dental visit in the prior year. And First Five was really interested in why that rate is so low, and we went out and did a study and talked to over 100 parents whose 2- to 5-year-olds had not seen a dentist in the last year. And it was really interesting what you find out when you ask about the why, because I think one of our things is the little bad parent, why aren't you taking your child? And what we heard back was that parents were being caring for their children, and they wanted to prevent trauma for their child because they had had trauma as children. And so they thought, these are baby teeth, they're not as important, they're going to fall out. When their real teeth come in, that's when we're going to start to, you know, care for those teeth, or not care for, that's when I'm going, that's when I'm willing to subject my child to the trauma of going to a dentist. So we had a big campaign around, there's actually many children's dental clinics now that are very child-friendly and parent-friendly and to bring your child in, and our whole campaign around first tooth, first birthday. And then another effort that First Five has done is to work with doctors, pediatricians, because it's part of that medical dental integration that Jonathan mentioned. But the other reason is that their pediatrician didn't tell them that they should take their child to see the dentist, and that the mouth is part of the whole body. So we had a lot of good messages that we learned, that we then honed and put back out to community, and we have seen those rates increase over time.
Yeah, thank you. And once again, First Five has been a stunning partner in this work. Obviously, the royal road to the immune system is under the tongue, and so if oral health is poor, the immune system is going to be continuously compromised. And the first tooth, first birthday, you know, we're preparing the gums for teeth. It's not just about having teeth, it's about preparing the mouth to have teeth. And so that's another thing we try to emphasize. If your kid doesn't have teeth, that's okay, bring them in because we want them to be ready for teeth. So I think that the campaign has been very helpful, but there's a long way to go, as you can see. And the grown-up kids are coming in at a very low rate for prevention. We can see in our county, 10% of the beneficiaries came in for prevention in 2023. There's an enormous opportunity for us to do more of that. And we're finding that the linkage to healthcare, the linkage to other services, if we can evangelize access to oral health through other locations, that will increase that. One way we can, one way we can help is with sealants. And sealant utilization, this is something we do in 6- to 14-year-olds. It's a thin layer that is painted literally onto the back of the teeth in the areas where the mouth is most active, most active when chewing. And we're seeing a low rate, sorry, that 10% was the 10% rate of sealants that we're seeing applied for children. We need to build literacy in our families around sealants, around the veneers as well with fluoride. There's a lot of discussion about fluoride right now, and there are direct applications that are available when some funding streams are being hit. We still need to build literacy about the double-blind, peer-reviewed, true experiments that are being done around fluoride and its direct application to the teeth. And sealant is simply a protective coat, and this is a benefit that is available to everyone, and it really depends on parents being educated. So a big public health opportunity here as well. Early Smiles Sacramento, we're very, very proud and grateful to this initiative. As you can see, 26,000 encounters, 26,500 encounters across the school districts in our county in 2023. And you can see quite a few signs that there's help needed. The early dental care needed, category 2, 15,000 of those kids needed to be referred over to a dentist. Urgent care, almost 600 of those kids actually needed urgent care. And the stories about why they needed urgent care is, they can be quite horrific. Do you have a story you want to share with us, Julie?
No, I do not.
Okay.
For time.
Okay, yeah. So our continued work is to keep the activities of our workgroups going and really, you know, inculcate those 17 recommendations from Barbara Avid into our communities. To participate alongside the Sacramento County Health Authority Commission, to ensure oral health inclusion and providing input on dental managed care delivery systems, to support projects and policies like the Early Smiles Sacramento Program, to monitor, support, and optimize the newly selected dental managed care plans, Liberty, who've been with us for a long time. And when you look at other data, some of our plans are outpacing plans across the state. It's quite impressive. And so our real focus probably is going to be on Dentacquest, making sure they can get up to speed with the other plans.
Jonathan, I have a request to speak. Supervisor Kennedy?
I'll wait till...
Oh, okay.
Thanks. We're going to continue meeting quarterly with DHCS. So we have a pre-meet with the DHCS leadership, and then they come and present to our committee. And then obviously, we continue our partnership with SAC County Department of Health Services and provide input for the SAC County Oral Health Program under Prop 56. I just, again, want to thank you for your support for this. Thank Julie for her incredible partnership on this. Deborah Payne has been very involved, continues to be very involved, Jennifer Fitzpatrick and the whole public health team. So please do convey our immense gratitude to them.
Thank you for the presentation. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Vice Chair. First of all, I got to say, you blew me away. This is amazing information. To Ms. Gattari, as we look at the mental, I mean, I'm sorry, the Health Authority Commission, this is a model that I think is achieving what, kind of in an area that, more of a direction that the Health Authority Commission should go in, is the type of work that's being done here. Yeah, I'm really pleased to hear that Health Net and Liberty will still be in our community. They've done fantastic work. I'm not familiar with Dentacquest, but I'll become. You know, the work that we're doing with Early Smiles and the work that, you know, you're doing at First Five, we're doing at First Five, is incredibly important. People look at dental care, at oral care, and they think about it as something separate. They think about it almost as a luxury. And as Dr. Portius has pointed out, that so much of our physical health care is dependent upon our health, our oral health care. People don't recognize that, but it's also important for someone's self-esteem. It's important, it's difficult for someone to get a job when they're at a job interview and their teeth are rotting. There's so many benefits. So I kind of, I love the direction that we're going in as a county. If we're no longer talking about mental health and physical health and dental health as something separate, it's healthcare. And so, you know, thank you. This is great work, and I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. I should probably note, if I may, Health Net, Health Net has both health and oral health beneficiaries. So it's interesting, you've got a plan here that does both, and they are increasingly trying to align the two so that the same provider can serve both oral health and health instead of, let's say, going to one FQHC for one and another for the other. And they actually have a specialist from the University of Kansas who they've brought in to actually work there, an expert in health integration and oral health. So we're getting a lot of input from all over the place into this committee, so.
Thank you. I can say that Health Net, Dentacquest, the new, the new plan, did agree to fund the Early Smiles program as well, because it used to be funded fully by First Five, and over the years, we've transitioned that program as our funding has decreased, and the three health plans have picked it up and now fully fund it. So that should continue in the future, too.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do not have requests to speak on this item.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, Madam Chair, if it pleases the board, we'll go back to item 48. That was scheduled at 11:00. That is, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is the county service area one, conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year 2526 service charges, confirm engineer's report, and adopt the resolution setting service charges for fiscal year 2526.
Morning.
Good morning.
This is Kamala Atwal, Department of Transportation, Principal Civil Engineer. I'll be presenting the CSA1 proposed fiscal year service charges for 2526. CSA1 funds the maintenance and operations for safety and streetlights in the unincorporated area. Standard service charges were frozen in 1996 since the passage of Prop 218. In 2006, enhanced and decorative service charges rates were adopted with the provisions for inflation, and the inflation factors were either higher of CPI index or electrical service rate increases with the cap of 5%. Based on the smud rate increases for the upcoming fiscal year, we are looking at 5% increase in the service charge for the inflatable categories. The service rates are shown in the board letter on page 2, and the seven rows, out of the seven rows, the first top three rows are fixed and the bottom rows were inflated by 5%. County maintains over 27,000 streetlights, which are owned by states, smud, and county. County owns 25,492 streetlights, and 93% of our inventory is converted to LED. We are incrementally converting our remaining inventory to LED as the budget, future fiscal years allow that. Staff recommends opening the public hearing to take public testimony and adopt the attached resolution confirming the engineer's report and setting the service charges for fiscal year 2526. I'm here to answer any questions.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. Two questions, Kamal. The first one is, I assume when it calls out per front foot, that's literally the width of the parcel?
Yes, yeah, the linear footage across the parcel on a public street.
Okay. And then the second question is, what is the difference between a safety and streetlight and a safety and enhanced streetlight?
The safety, physically, they're both the same. The enhanced category is inflatable. It's imposed on the new development when they're coming in, and they have a condition to basically annex into a higher service charge.
And so is that some sort of statute that it doesn't, if it doesn't have that modifier in the title, it's not inflatable?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
But we have a higher level of service for the enhanced rates. So our turnaround time is quicker if an issue is reported.
Okay.
Okay, no other requests to speak. We will now open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do not have any speakers.
All right, we will now close the public hearing and... All right, well, yeah, thank you.
Okay, unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Yes, so we are going to go up to item 51. We've already taken care of all the other items in between that. I'll just double-check that. So item 51 is the legislative position on Senate Bill 8 by Ashby, and this is for peace officers, injury or illness leaves of absence.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Alicia DeBoer, your Governmental Relations and Legislative Officer, here to request that you take a legislative position on SB 8, on, and that is Senator Ashby's SB 8, peace officers, injury or illness leaves of absence as amended March 27. On March 25, the board directed the county executive office to bring this item before you for a position as the legislative platform doesn't include this policy area. In short, SB 8 pertains to our county park rangers, workers' compensation benefits. Our park rangers currently receive 100% wage replacement, fully taxed, for work-related injury absences for up to a year. SB 8 adds Sacramento County Park Rangers to Labor Code Section 4850 to receive up to one year tax-free wage replacement for work-related injuries. I'm happy to answer questions, and I offer it back up to you for a position.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you, Alicia, for that. And David, appreciate you bringing this to us. I'm very supportive of it. This is a benefit. I think it makes perfect sense for this to apply to park rangers, just as it does to CHP officers, police officers, and county sheriffs throughout the state. They do a very similar job. It's a temporary disability benefit that I know that we provide some benefits that are very similar as part of our negotiations, but does not include the tax benefits and certainly does not, it is not enshrined in legislation. I've submitted a letter of support. I've heard that multiple supervisors have as well, and I will move approval that the county take an official support position on the bill. Thank you.
And we do not have any public comments on this, Madam Chair.
Okay, great.
And I can draft a support letter for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay. Item 52 is the Election Administration Workshop.
It's weird being here when it's not an election. Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and members of the...
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Board. I am Hing Nguyen, your registrar voters, and today we are going to have a little presentation about election administration. So just so you know, currently, this number of registered voters that we have on the slide when it was created five weeks ago has already since grown. Our current number of registered voters is 911,108, or 98 registered voters. And so I'm providing that number to you because the context matters. Everything we do in voter registration and elections is driven by the active number of registered voters that we support. So for some background for you, the California Elections Code requires us to provide one vote center location for every 10,000 registered voters, and one ballot drop box location for every 15,000 registered voters. So that already has grown since our last administered election. We are at this number, sitting at 92 vote center locations and 61 ballot drop box locations. In the November election, we had 88 and 59. And that is also to say that to support all of these locations throughout the entire county, vote centers and ballot drop boxes, and the processes in our central office at 7,065th Street, we bring in over 1,400 temporary staff to support all of these processes. That requires a lot of training from the small VRE team. We also facilitate communication with over 240 individual districts, manage those boundaries, receive resolutions, and coordinate the election administration for them. In any given election, the number of unique ballot styles that we have for an election between a primary, between a general, between a presidential and gubernatorial election, those unique ballot styles can vary between 50 to 200. And that is before we start encapsulating the language requirements that we support as well. That's also over 1,700 unique precincts that we manage with a very small and dedicated staff of 43. This team, I would like to take a moment to just highlight, because they are really the behind-the-scenes magic makers of this department. With 43 permanent staff, they are the epitome of dedication. They operate under the mentality and the guise of, we follow the law, but we do everything that we absolutely can to ensure accurate elections and transparent elections. This team is something that is to be seen, and I know that a lot of you have been in our department, in which you've seen the firsthand support, the mentality of, if you're working late, I'm working late. If you're working a weekend, I'm also working a weekend. In 2018, when we had the massive voting systems implementation ahead of the June election, I actually had a project manager from the Department of Technology ask me, "Hing, what happens if we don't get it together? What happens if we're unable to pull this off?" And I looked at her, and I said, "Honey, we just sent out 740,000 invitations in the form of ballots. There is no other option. We are doing this, and it will work." And that is to say that we don't do this in a wind tunnel. We don't do this alone. We have a lot of collective support from you as the Board, our county leadership team. We also have a large support in the form of our CIO and his Department of Technology. We have the support of our PIOs, Kim, Jana, and Ken, that does all of the public information so that I don't have to, which I very much appreciate. We also have the support from all of the department heads within the county and their teams to support us, to ensure our collective support. So this is all to say, we don't do this alone. We don't do this alone, but we also don't have a very large playground for us to play in. Elections, as you know, is a very heavily regulated process. It's not just regulated at the state level, but it's regulated at the federal level as well. There are a number of federal provisions. I won't bore you with all the details, but I will point out just a few of the ones that really make the headlines very often. We follow the federal constitution. That is the laws and provisions that help govern the federal contest that we administer elections for. It also provides all of the civil rights protections that constituents and voters have as well. We also follow very closely the Help America, Help America Vote Act, which provides provisions to really, to help us understand and regulate the voting systems, right? This came into effect in 2002, after the presidential election of 2000. It also provides alternate ID requirements for any voter that registers within the nation. We also abide by the Americans with Disabilities Act, just to make sure that all of the locations that we facilitate for use is going to be accessible. We follow the National Voter Registration Act. That is for voter file maintenance. We also have provisions within the Voting Rights Act that requires us to provide access to voting, including language and accessibility access. Lastly, we have the Uniformed and Overseas Civilians Absentee Voting Act, and this is for any of our, you know, uniformed officers or military personnel, civilians residing overseas, to ensure that they are still able to access the right for them to cast a ballot. And then, as we move over to the state side, more laws, more regulations. First and foremost, we have the California Constitution, which heavily prescribes the way that we administer state elections. Along with that, we have a Bible of the California Elections Code, in which it will provide every single provision of every single law in which it is for us to follow when we administer elections within the state of California. That is not to say that those are the only laws that we provide, that we follow. We also have government code that helps us navigate through charter cities versus general law cities, charter counties, et cetera. We also have education code for the school districts that we administer elections for. So that's just a few that are probably the most relevant. And then, as you know, we work very closely with the California Secretary of State and our association as elections officials, to ensure that as laws are passing through the state legislature, we are working very closely to craft regulations for these state laws to ensure that there is uniform applicability throughout the entire state, so that if one county is doing something a certain way, that we're all kind of uniformly applying that law. So something that I also wanted to share with you all is the ongoing work that goes on in voter registration and elections every single day, whether or not there is an election that is currently being administered. There is a heavy lift that our team is always trying to manage. So first off, we have education and outreach, because we believe that an informed electorate is a more prepared electorate. So we have a very small outreach team that will engage in the community. They'll go out to events within the community. They'll provide information regarding elections. They'll provide, provide access to, for voters to register and update their voter registration records. They also work very closely with the schools within Sacramento County to provide access for students as well, including administering mock elections, and the ability for them to preregister when they turn 16. So then, that way, we have all of their information to basically turn on in the system when they turn 18, ahead of an election. Next up, we have our vote center assessment and selection. I don't know if you guys know this, but a lot of our vote center work, our selection process, how we contract out and select the locations, all of this is going to be done a year in advance of the election, and that is because we do not like to disenfranchise voters, nor should we want to disenfranchise voters. We try very hard that when we are selecting locations for use, that we are basically contracting with the location for both the primary and a general election at the same time. We don't like to change the location in between elections, because that sometimes causes voter confusion. In addition to that, as the site staff is going out and locating locations due to either growth in registered voter counts, in which we need more locations, or feedback from the community, that a previously used location was not really meeting the needs of the community, they are actually out there also conducting an accessibility review of the location itself, because under federal law, all of our vote center locations have to be accessible to the public. That includes the door pressure, the thresholds, the path of travels, in addition to state law that requires us to cite locations based on state criteria, that, you know, includes things like access to public transportation, free public parking, access to community areas, low vehicle ownership, areas in which there is low vote-by-mail usage, there is a laundry, or a whole host of criteria that we are considering when we are citing these locations. Next up, we also train and staff a lot of locations, and with that, because the laws are always changing every single year, we want to make sure that our training materials, whether it is to be used in the vote centers, or if it is going to be used in staff for us to internally train ourselves, that we are always up to date. And for any of you that have visited me, you will know that I have eight mini binders on my desk that will cover all of the federal state laws and regulations, to ensure that we're always in compliance with all of the things that we put out in the world. We also work year-round in compliance with the National Voter Registration Act, as well as Division 2 of the California Elections Code, to ensure that we comply with state and federal law requirements regarding voter file maintenance. As you have seen in the media, we have been very proactive within the last two months or so, putting out regular media releases with the help of our PIO Ken, to ensure that the public is aware of the voter file maintenance that we are conducting, including when they will receive mailings and what the mailings mean. So voter file list maintenance, I would like to start by saying that all of this work is done within my department at 7,065th Street, by my team at voter registration and elections. I wanted to clarify that, because a lot of the times, we will hear in the media that people are registered at the DMV, they're registered online at the Secretary of State's website, and all of that means is that the information that is being collected at the DMV, at the Secretary of State, via their, their online voter registration mechanism, or, you know, voter registration forms that are received out in the field, all of that information is passed through and back down to the Sacramento County Elections Department for us to process those individual records. So that is going to be my team at voter registration that does that. I also wanted to highlight that the Secretary of State does provide voter file maintenance training every single year, as pursuant to the National Voter Registration Act, and while I only have a team of maybe eight people that touch the voter file day in and day out, I do require all 43 staff in the department, regardless of where they sit, to take this training as well. So when do we mail things out? We mail things out a lot. Anytime that we receive a new registration, an updated registration from a voter, we will send a confirmation card to ensure that that information is correct. In addition, if we receive any third-party notifications indicating that a voter has maybe moved, because they have address forwarding services on the, for the United States Postal Service, we will also send a notice to the voter indicating, "Hey, we received something back in our office, indicating that you may not live, you know, at this address anymore. Can you please confirm?" We will also take any of the undeliverable mail that is returned back to our department in the form of an official ballot that we sent out, any of the postcard mailings that we sent out. If any of that information comes back as indeliverable, and it has a yellow Nixie sticker on it, we will use that information to inactivate the voter in our file. I wanted to highlight that, because inactive voters in the file do not receive election materials. So this is an ongoing task to ensure that we are being mindful of the active voters that we have in our file. It was, it's most certainly a proactive approach that we are doing in, in our office. And so for any voter that is inactivated in our system, they will remain to be inactive until after two federal general elections have lapsed. Once those two federal general elections have lapsed, and we have not heard from them, indicating that they still want to be our voter, we will send them a pre-cancellation card. That pre-cancellation card will essentially say, "Hey, we have you slated to be removed from the voter rolls. If you don't want to be removed, please return this card. Otherwise, we will cancel your voter registration within 15 days." We recently sent out a little bit over 56,000 pre-cancellation cards in, I think, early April. Of those 56,000 pre-cancellation cards, we received notice from 300 voters, indicating that they still reside in Sacramento County. So those 3,000, or 300, I'm sorry, 300 voters, and we reactivated and moved them back into active status. However, the other 55,700 voters that were slated for cancellation were removed from the voter rolls. So they're no longer inactive or in our voter file.
Quick question. So would somebody have to register to vote again if they get canceled? Is that what the process is? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so this is just a brief timeline of what we, through the election administration timeline. We actually start about 210 days before an election cycle, and this is going to include, you know, researching and reviewing laws that may have just passed, updating all of our guides, our resources that are available to the public. It's also going to be a time in which we clean up our poll worker training materials to ensure that we're putting our best foot forward. But the real work really starts about 150 days before an election, and this is when we start messaging to the districts. We need their resolutions back. We need them to tell us how many contests they're going to have on ballot, how many seats are up for election, and how they would like us to administer this election for them. And this is going to go to all, you know, 246 districts that we have in the county. It is a heavy feat, because there is also going to be a lot of coordination between our incorporated cities as well, because they have the ability to file their own candidates for the election. So there's a lot of communication that goes back and forth to ensure that they're in compliance and all the correct forms are being utilized. Candidate filing starts about 110 days before the election, and during this phase, that's when any individual that is going to be interested in running for office, they're able to come to our public counter, they can make an appointment prior to, and they can receive all of their paperwork, to ensure that they are eligible to appear on the ballot. Something that is unique is we build every single election from scratch. There is no carryover, there is no residual. Every single election that we administer in Sacramento County is a brand-new election every single cycle. We don't carry any information over, and that is because the contests and candidates that appear on the ballot will vary and change based on the districts that are running for our election. So beginning around 90 days, and it's a little cut off, but it's 90, beginning 90 days before the election, that is when we start really, we start feeling out the number of contests that we are going to have on the ballot. The filing period for candidates to file is 88 days before the election. So once that deadline hits, we don't receive nominations or paperwork for candidates anymore. We essentially lock out, or lock down the candidate filing period, and at that point, we are able to determine very quickly how many unique ballot styles we are going to have for the ballot, which contests will appear on the ballot, which contests have fallen off the ballot because they didn't have enough candidates file. And then, following that, we will start compiling and proofing all of the election materials that go out. We don't have a lot of time to do this, because we also coordinate elections for the state. We do not get their certified list for their statewide candidates until 67 days before the election. So as you can see, between 67 days and 60 days, we are starting to really create our election, including all the equipment that we deploy out in the field, all of the ballots that voters vote on, and all of the county voter information guides that we will be mailing out. We also hit a very hard federal deadline in the midst of all of this, because by 45 days before an election, we also have to send out all of the ballots to all of our military and overseas civilians to ensure compliance with the federal law. This is a metric that we will, we will always hit, even if it means that we're coming in on that Saturday and driving directly to the post office, because this is something that we also report to the Secretary of State to ensure compliance. Beginning- Beginning 29 days before the election is when all of the official ballots are going to start hitting the mail stream. We drop them on a singular day to ensure that everybody is going to receive their ballots around the same time. We do not pick and choose which cities, which pockets of the county, which areas of the county will receive their ballot first. Everybody gets their ballot at the same time. Following that, we also open all of our ballot drop box locations to ensure that if a voter receives their ballot the next day after we put it in the mail, that they have a mechanism in order for them to return their ballot back to us. So the last election, we have 59 ballot drop boxes that we opened. Upcoming, we'll have more than that. 15 days before the election, we also have the close of registration, and that just means that we report this information to the California Secretary of State for their report of registration. Following that, we will open the conditional voter registration period, which means that any voter that has not yet registered to vote in Sacramento County can still do that, but they would have to register at that point in an envelope that will be verified by our staff at voter registration and elections after the election has happened. 10 days before the election, so that is two Saturdays before Election Day, we start opening our first 18 early voting locations, and that is going to be throughout the entire county. It is a support model that we have had since 2018, when we first adopted the Voters' Choice Act. Following that, the Saturday before, which is three days before Election Day, we opened the rest of the early voting locations. So again, that would be the 88 locations in total that we had for the November 2024 election. We already have surpassed that number, and we will have more in 2026. On Election Day, that all of the polls will open at 7:00 AM at all of the early voting locations, vote centers that we have throughout the county, and the hours will go until 8:00 PM on Election Night. Our office is not a vote center location by design because we do all of the support from our location, and our staff is working diligently to offer replacement ballots. Thank you. After the polls close at 8:00 PM on Election Night, we will publish our first results shortly after. And so as you know, the first initial results that we publish shortly after 8:00 PM on Election Day will encompass all of the vote-by-mail ballots that we have received and processed prior to Election Day. So we usually draw a stop processing that Monday before Election Day, plus the 10 days of early voting for any voter that visited a vote center location. Following that, we will continue to report every two hours as prescribed by state law to ensure that we are reporting, tabulating, and reporting on all of the in-person ballots that we have received at any of the 88 vote center locations on Election Day. So the numbers will not increment very high because the number of registered voters in Sacramento County that chooses to vote in person at a vote center location varies between 4% and 8%, given the type of election that we administer. By and large, voters in Sacramento County will vote the vote-by-mail ballot that is mailed directly to them. So that is to say, we will post an update at 10:15 PM, we'll post again at midnight. And this last election that we administered, our last update before going home was about 2:00 AM. I also, because I am the registrar of voters, I am not allowed to leave the building until I hear and receive clearance from the California Secretary of State that they have received our final update for the night. The state will send CHP to my office or to my home if I leave before that, so I don't want to traumatize my children, so I sit around and wait for them until they arrive. Following Election Day, there's still a lot of work to do, just because in this last election, on Election Day, through our vote centers and our ballot drop box locations and shortly after, received timely through the mail, our office received about 370,000 vote-by-mail ballots back that were timely. That means that we had 740,000 individual ballot cards to process. That takes a huge amount of work in order for us to get through all of the verification steps, between trying the vote-by-mail ballots, verifying the signatures to ensure the voter that voted that ballot is actually who signed that, that pink envelope, extracting the ballot from the ballot envelope itself, preparing it for tabulation. So something that we did during this last November election is we moved all of our staff, temporary staff and permanent staff, around to different processes as their process wrapped up. By doing that, we were able to report on the bulk of the ballots received on Election Night by the following Friday after Election Day. So that's about 10 days after Election Day, we had the bulk of the ballots reported. Anything that we had left was really going to be duplicated ballots that were damaged by the voter or by equipment that we have to recreate, or it was going to be the conditional voter registration ballots that we received at the vote center locations. We also have canvas activities that begin right after Election Day. So at 9:00 AM, I'm doing a public drawing for, for the precincts that we are going to be conducting a manual audit on. That canvas period is going to run for between 28 and 30 days, depending on the type of election that we administer. So election results are going to be updated two times a week pursuant to state law. We have established this schedule since about 2018, just so that we're able to manage the expectations of the public so that they're aware of when the next update will appear. The deadline for us to receive vote-by-mail ballots that are postmarked in our, postmarked on Election Day is seven days after the election. So we do stage teams at the West Sacramento and East Parkway post offices to ensure that any ballot that is delivered there is collected and returned back to our office. The deadline to receive signature verification statements, so as you know, we verify with human eyes the signature on every single vote-by-mail ballot that is received to us. We have signature verification terminals in our office that allows our staff to see the image of the pink vote-by-mail envelope with the signature on it and be able to compare it to the voter's signature on file.
Ms. Wan, can I just make a statement? So, you know, in the last election and the one before, there was a lot of, you know, concern about, oh, well, why does it take so long? What is, you know, what's going on in Stat County? Why can't Stat County do it like other counties? But one thing that when I took a tour of the voter registrations office, there are so many checks and balances that it left me reassured that if somebody submits, you know, a ballot, that there's going to be that signature verification. But it would, but what it really led me to is to let people know, vote in advance, like send your, send your ballot in advance so that after Election Day, we don't have these thousands of mail-in ballots that need to be processed and only delays the, you know, final outcome.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that comment. You're absolutely correct. As you know, as I mentioned, the majority of our voters will vote by mail, but they also have a level of procrastination that is going to play into that as well. So we're working very closely with our PIO ahead of the next election cycle to ensure that we're messaging, return your ballot early. I know that there was a recommendation thrown out by the team to provide a recommended mail-in date to ensure that voters are getting those ballots back to us, because as they come back earlier, we are able to keep up with the work. The choke point comes after Election Day when we are hit the hardest. So as we are verifying signatures, if there is a ballot envelope that looks like it's not the individual that signed, we do have the ability to challenge it, and then we send notices to the voter to give them the opportunity to correct their, their signature. In the November 2024 election, we had about 2,400 challenged ballots at the end of the election in which we challenged it, and the voter never responded to us with a signature verification statement. The law doesn't allow us to certify the election until we receive, we set a deadline for two days before the certification for us to receive these signature verification statements back. And that will vary based on the type of election that we administer. Our deadline to certify a gubernatorial election is going to be 30 days. Our deadline to certify a presidential election is going to be 28 days, because we have to report the elector information to the California Secretary of State. And then following that, we have a five-day, five calendar day period in which any member of the public is able to request a recount at their cost. We have also worked very hard to be proactive with sharing the information that we do, and that is going to come in the form of a lot of the social media posts that you've all seen, getting out in front of it and educating our electorate on the things that we do and the importance of having an accurate voter file. So we've sent out something regarding the pre-cancellations, we've sent out something regarding the work that goes on behind the scenes if we have a residence that has a lot of registered voters there. We also sent out something recently regarding out-of-state mailing addresses to ensure that we are receiving accurate information from the voters year-round. We also have election tours that we schedule, and we invite members of the public in so that we can provide them with a comprehensive educational tour regarding what happens to a ballot when it is printed, when it is mailed, once it makes it back into our department, and where it goes throughout that, that phase. As always, our office is always open for public observation. We are transparent, and as long as you follow the guidelines based on the provisions of the Election Observer Guidelines, we will take you back escorted, and we will place you in areas in which you're able to observe and view, view any of the ballot processing steps that we have in our office, and that is going to be anytime that we're there. So if we're there at 8:00 PM, they're there at 8:00 PM. And then the last is, you know, what I mentioned earlier is with the community engagement, working with our local partners at, you know, the schools and the community to ensure that we are educating the messengers so that they are able to go out and share the good work that we do at voter registration and elections. We also have some resources that are available on our website. So we have a page on election security that is going to cover all of the layered security approaches that we have in elections to educate the public on all of the checks and balances that we have between physical and legal protections. We also have videos on our website regarding the life of the ballot and a diagram of the life of the ballot, following with access to My Voter Portal, which is the voter's one-stop shop regarding all of their information. And then for anybody that would like to save paper, the ability for them to opt out of receiving a printed county voter information guide. And that wraps my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Ms. Wan, you are a wealth of information when it comes to voter registration. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And Hang, thank you for being here and for the presentation. I mean, I'll just start out by saying, I mean, Sacramento County has, we have a lot of stars in the county, and you are certainly one of them. I mean, you do an outstanding job administering our, our elections, and I thank you for your work. And I am so convinced that you follow the law, the regulations to the letter, and, and you take your job very seriously. And if you ever have a problem with the CHP, make sure you contact me first if that ever comes up.
You're on speed dial.
Oh, that's true. Actually, you don't want to talk to me, talk to them. But, so the question, you know, something, and I really love what you do with the transparency, offering up these, these tours, making yourself available and your office available to educate and inform the public. I think that's so extremely important. But we, we all get criticism from local media and our constituents all the time, again, about the, the time delay. Why is Sacramento so much longer than other counties? And to me, that, that, it's kind of obvious why that might be as opposed to, compared to a rural county, certainly, or some of the surrounding counties. But in terms of maybe how we lag behind other urban counties, is that really, in your opinion, is that because of the, the 370,000 ballots that you have to, to verify? And if so, are, are we an outlier from other urban counties of similar populations?
So the California Secretary of State requires to also report something to them every other day, with every election report update, the number of unprocessed ballots that we still have in our building, and they require this of all of the 58 counties. And so while we were monitoring it, we certainly weren't the outlier. We were right in line with some of those larger jurisdictions, being that we are the eighth-largest voting jurisdiction in the state. We envisioned that at some point, we will surpass Alameda County and take on the seventh spot. But certainly, we weren't the outlier. I, I think that accuracy takes time, and, you know, we are really hyper-focused on ensuring that we're doing everything precisely the, the same that we would prior to Election Day, that we would after Election Day. We don't loosen up after Election Day happens. And so we, we're just really dedicated to ensuring that the results are, are right, because we, we don't want anybody coming up here and alleging or accusing the County Elections Office of breaking the law, so.
Yeah, and I have total confidence in that, Hang, so thank you. So I think for messaging, for me, when I talk to constituents, it's two things. It's, number one, don't believe everything you read in the media, but also don't, don't compare Sacramento County to Yolo, Placer, El Dorado County. It's a much different dynamic. And then in terms of your messaging, I hope it, maybe there's an opportunity to say, look, we are not an outlier if you're comparing us with similarly sized counties. There's nothing unique about Sacramento County in terms of, of the returns we're getting. So I'll stop there, but I also, just one last thing, I just, I so appreciate that you always start first with really acknowledging your staff, your team, and lifting them up, and, and that is really the hallmark of a, of a good leader, Hang, so thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Hang, I want to apologize if this caused extra work for you during what is normally maybe a lull in your overall peak and valley of workload. But I, I did request for this presentation, and I'm a little disappointed that the group that was part of the impetus for requesting this, the group that would come and levy, you know, suspicions and maybe even allegations, didn't bother to take the opportunity to come here and hear directly from you and ask questions of you with you in the room. It's good to know that at least we will have the video file that we can refer back to, particularly with those QR codes, because in our briefing about this item, and, and again, with the tour that I took of voter registration shortly after my election, you know, there's a whole lot to the chain of custody that you didn't even get into with respect to the fact that all of the ballots that are picked up from the ballot locations, it's a, it's a small number of people, they document throughout the whole course and the chain of custody, and they're supervised. And so it would really have to be collusion on a pretty grand scale of some very unethical and immoral people to, to commit something to, to affect an election. And then once it gets to you and gets to the registrar's office, how it works through the system there and the, and the care that's taken to make sure that tampering isn't done and that ballots are verified, and then the real time back and forth with the other counties within the state system, that if a ballot for a voter is received, that's going to flag every other potential county so that you can check and make sure that people aren't voting in multiple counties, people aren't voting multiple times within the same county, and that sometimes folks are going to be taken off of those roles. And so I, I just appreciate you taking the time to come and do this. I know that it maybe feels a little like overkill for, for someone like yourself that's, that's involved in this and has such high regard for your team to, but I, I'm, I'm just happy that you were able to come and do this. I did have one question, though, and that is, with respect to the 56,000 or so inactive voters that were taken off the rolls, is that number reflected in that 911,000?
No, that is, that number has already been removed from the 911,000.
And so then that would be the one thing, is do you ever cross-reference, if you will? Because to me, out of a population of 1.6 million, it seems an awfully large number to think that over half of those are adults and that all of the adults are registered to vote. Is that, am I wrong to think that that seems large?
I, I think that that's pretty standard, and I, and I don't really fixate on the numbers so much, just because I know that we do have, as you mentioned, the statewide voter registration database, and people are really nomadic by nature. Even in the last census information that we receive, we know that we received a lot more of the voter, our, our, our population has grown here in, in Sacramento County. People are really mobile, and I think that as we are being more proactive with our approach regarding voter file maintenance, we will continue to see that number tick up. We provide the voter with every opportunity for them to tell us that they still live and reside here, but that isn't going to stop us from trying to proactively engage and send out the notices and the mailings and do everything that we absolutely can with the, the information that we receive back. And it is because we are connected to the statewide voter registration database that we are fixated on doing that, because if our, our, our records are not accurate, we are, we're, we're not helping other counties as well, right? So as you talk about the statewide voter registration database and how there is near real-time connectivity to all of these other counties, as soon as somebody that is registered... connectivity to all of these other counties, as soon as somebody that is registered in Sacramento County that is going to re-register in Placer County or Yolo County or El Dorado County, as soon as those counties make that record theirs, they have the ability to pull that record out of Sacramento County. So that record is no longer active here, they will be canceled in our file. Voter file maintenance happens every single day, and in 2024 alone, our staff processed over a million transactions. So 56,000 is just a really small drop in the bucket for us.
Great. So then the last thing I'll say is, I would encourage anybody that watches this video at a future date or even in real time now, that second-to-last slide with those QR codes, follow those, contact your office, request a tour. You know, the information is readily available, and I think it's impressive, the amount of work that you do. So I just wanted to thank you for being here and thank you for your presentation.
We have one more request to speak. David Villanueva.
Thank you, Supervisor Rodriguez. I really appreciate Hang coming here. It's always surprising that she can sit here and rattle off all the different codes and all the different things. I think she's reading the QR codes in her mind herself, but she does it with absolutely no notes. And to Supervisor Desmond's comment about a good leader and a fantastic leader that Hang is, she's incredibly knowledgeable about our voter election or the state voter election and the federal requirements. But I have a feeling that there's probably 43 people sitting back at their office, at her office right now, watching us, and I'd just like to say thank you to them and all the work that they do and the effort that they do. I have never seen a much, any more dedicated people to the election process than those 43 people along with the 1,100 or so temporary workers. Hang and Whitney do a great job on leading those folks, and you can rest assured that your election here in Sacramento County is being done correctly, transparently, and accurately. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any requests to speak? Do you have one? Fozia Faruk.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Fozia Faruk, and I'm with the Council on American Islamic Relations, the Sacramento Valley Central California Office. And I wanted to take a moment to sincerely thank the Sacramento County Voter Registration and Election Office for not only being just accessible for us, but genuinely welcoming and, you know, being fairly collaborative with our communities. As an organization that serves a diverse Muslim community, including many newly naturalized citizens, first-time young voters, and multilingual households, we deeply value their commitment to equity, access, and inclusion. Over the past year, we've seen the Elections Office go above and beyond in partnering with our community organizers like us, and whether they're providing culturally and linguistically appropriate voter materials, or answering questions about registration deadlines, or just creating a space for dialogue on how to better serve our communities, we thank them, and we're really, you know, we're looking forward to continuing this partnership. And we also want to thank you, Supervisor Pat Hume, for requesting this.
Thank you. So this is a receive and file, no action taken. Are there any other items this morning?
Do not have any other agenda items for this morning.
So we will adjourn the closed session and return at 2:00 p.m.
Yeah, you keep saying how shitty we're doing. What would you?
Good afternoon. We will now reconvene the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May 13th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good afternoon, Supervisors Kennedy, Desmond, Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Item 53, this is the public hearing to change the street name of Squaw Valley Way to River Valley Way in the Rancho Cordova community.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Rodriguez, members of the board. My name is Lupe Rodriguez. I'm with the Transportation Department, and I'll be making the short presentation on this item today. Just to give you a little background, per Assembly Bill 2022, Squaw was declared as an offensive ethnic and racial slur, and as a result, the California Advisory Committee of Geographic Names was tasked with working collaboratively with the California Native American Tribes, local communities, to determine respectable replacement names. So during the last couple of years, SacDOT has been working with the California Advisory Committee on this effort to rename the streets in the unincorporated county. And in this case, we only had one street with that name. So really, the process involved consulting with the local California Native American Tribes. We conducted a community meeting out in the community that included the 14 households on this street were invited to this meeting so we could provide some additional input and also to gather input on regards to the new names being proposed. After that, we obtained approval from the California Advisory Committee on the new proposed name. And finally, staff noticed the meeting by placing advisory signs out in the community on the street to notice the meeting for the highways, for the Streets and Highways Code Section 970.5. So at this point, staff was recommending the board to adopt a resolution approving the name change of Squaw Valley Way to River Valley Way. So that ends my short presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Are there any requests to speak? Actually, you know what? Let me open the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak?
We do not have anyone signed up.
All right. I will now close the public hearing, and we have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Unanimous with those members present.
All right. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Yes. Item 54 is the rezoned tentative subdivision map and design review for a property located at the northwest corner of Alberta Road and 16th Street in the Rio Linda, Alberta community, and the environmental determination is exempt. And I also will need to take an oath on this. If we have public testimony, I can do that now, or we can do it before public testimony.
All right. Good afternoon. Emma Patton, Senior Planner here to present the Alberta 59F South project. The project is centrally located within the Alberta specific plan. The project includes a rezon, a large lot map, a small lot map, and a design review. While the site was rezoned with the adoption of the specific plan, the requested rezon will alter the configuration of zoning to better reflect the proposed maps and drainage corridors. The large lot map would establish the commercial lots, the multifamily lot, the drainage corridor lot, the powerline corridor lot, as well as some minor lots. I do want to note that the 5.7-acre multifamily site will be dedicated to SH Array for an affordable housing site. This site would not only serve the affordable housing obligation for the Alberta 59F South map, but it would also serve the obligation for Alberta 59F North and Alberta 245 to previously approved tentative subdivision maps. The small lot map shown here would create 36 single-family dwelling units or dwelling This project was unanimously supported by the CPAC, the DRAK, and the Planning Commission. And based on that support and the project's compliance with applicable codes and ordinances, staff recommends the board recognize the exempt status of and adopt the MMRP, adopt the rezon ordinance, approve the small and large lot tentative maps, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. The applicant team is also here should you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? No, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Do not.
All right. I will move number 54 for approval.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, for item 55, this is the Public Safety and Justice Agency annual update, including jail population plans and Public Safety and Justice Agency Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Board. I'm Eric Jones, the Deputy County Executive of the Public Safety and Justice Agency. And today, you'll hear some updates on the county's progress toward achieving compliance with the May's Consent Decree, including the county's jail population reduction plans and updates on the Public Safety and Justice Agency Advisory Committee. I'll lead the presentation. However, we have a lot of the numerous agencies and partners here who have representatives who are involved in both the social services as well as criminal justice components of what we're going to talk about today. The Board of Supervisors created the Public Safety and Justice Agency in 2021, and as the Deputy County Executive over the agency, I provide oversight of four departments listed here, Coroner's Office, Probation, Public Defender, and Conflict Criminal Defender's Office. I'm also the liaison for the County Exec's Office to our elected officials of the criminal justice system, which are the Sheriff's Office and the District Attorney. And then I coordinate with these other entities that are all related to the work we all do, which is the Inspector General, Superior Court, the Criminal Justice Cabinet, and the Community Corrections Partnership, to name a few. And then I'm advised by the Public Safety and Justice Advisory Committee, which we'll talk a little bit more about that, but that is designed for community input into the work that we do. The PSJA envisions increasing public safety while reducing negative outcomes, increasing efficiencies and effectiveness of the countywide criminal justice system with a shared framework of public safety. Here are the three, top three goals that have really remained unchanged for the last couple of years, which the first two are tied together. This is improving countywide data sharing among all of the justice partners, as well as increasing transparency and bringing as much of that data as possible public-facing so that we can share all of that information. And then, of course, number three here is to improve compliance with the May's Consent Decree. That's where I work with all of our variety of partners and county council as well. Regarding the consent decree, this slide highlights a portion of the timeline of activities that led up to, created, and have been completed in response to the May's Consent Decree. The consent decree itself, it's a 2020 agreement between the legal counsel representing a class of persons. That class of persons are all of those who are currently incarcerated in Sacramento County jails, as you know, there are two jails, the main jail as well as Rio Consumnas Correctional Center, and to approve the conditions of those in custody. The consent decree includes 320 compliance provisions, many of which have sub-provisions amounting to nearly 400 individual requirements across six remedial areas. These six remedial areas are listed here, but that is compliance with ADA, improvements in mental health care, improvements in medical care, use of restricted housing, disciplinary measures in how they are used and not used, as well as suicide prevention measures. In 2022, the county entered into a MOA, a memorandum of agreement, that added requirements for the county to produce a plan aimed at reducing the average daily population. So you'll hear the term ADP used. That's what that is, is the average daily population of our jails, which would be the jail system, and a plan to remediate the facility limitations. In December of 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved two frameworks. One, the Jail Population Reduction Plan, and two, capital projects. We'll come back to the capital projects later, but that is specifically often referred to as the jail annex or the intake and health services facility. Again, I will circle back to a capital project slide as well. Many times we hear, why are we pursuing jail population reduction? Well, first off, as a county, we agreed to it, both in the consent decree and in the 2022 memorandum of agreement. Second, having a small jail population would theoretically allow limited jail resources, such as a limited number of beds that can serve those high-need populations, to stretch farther. However, if reducing the jail population is only a condition of the consent decree if we cannot meet all of the provisions and provide adequate conditions of confinement for all inmates, including those with high level of physical and mental health needs. Moving back in time, when the county agreed to create a jail population reduction plan, it did so under the guidance of a consultant, O'Connell Research. O'Connell Research produces the Sacramento County Jail study, or they did that in 2022. That study was based on 2021 data to understand the composition of the jails. O'Connell Research created 10 recommendations aimed at reduced bookings, reducing three areas, reducing bookings, reducing length of stay in custody, and reducing returns to custody. All three of those categories theoretically would reduce jail population. Also, it was determined, or if fully implemented, O'Connell suggested we could potentially reduce the average daily population of the jail by 592, so nearly 600. Now, that 600 number is and was a target. It is not mandated to reduce our actual jail population by that number. It's a target based on information at the time that was available, and it was also, many things were not known then that are known now, which I'll also get into in a But I will point out in 2021 also, we were mid-COVID, so we had a public health emergency orders that created certain release mechanisms at the jail that are no longer in play. Additionally, several laws, specifically those related to mental health diversion and recent Proposition 36, did not exist when that study was completed. And also, the O'Connell recommendations require criminal justice system partners, the majority of, aren't really even under the consent decree nor under the control of us as a county, but it requires all of those different partners to work together to get reductions in these areas. That's Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, Defense Counsel, Superior Court, booking law enforcement agencies, et cetera. It would require all of them working together. Okay. Last year, the 33 programs and services of the Jail Population Reduction Plan were consolidated into six different strategies, all of which contribute to reducing jail admissions, length of stay in custody, and the returns to custody. These are the three categories I mentioned before. The green box with check marks just denote which column that they apply to. Several of them actually cross over in multiple areas. Just a quick recap on these are that, number one, is to increase behavioral health interventions, so that is to hopefully prevent jail admissions, but also returns to custody. Maximizing initial deflection of pre-arrangement releases, reducing time in jail for those who can safely be released into the community or placed in alternative care facilities. Reducing jail admissions and returns to custody from particular warrants and violations, and improving service linkages, which reduce barriers for treatment and hopefully also reduce recidivism. Individual performance measures were identified for each of these six strategies. The county was required to report back on the Jail Population Reduction Plan progress in six-month intervals. The most recent report covers activities from July 1st through December of 2024. We posted a draft of the report publicly. We shared it with our Public Safety and Justice Advisory Committee, and we have revised the report in certain areas with their input and feedback. Here are some highlights of the population reduction. Number one is that we have reduced the federal inmate contract. There was a time where 300 of the members of the jailed population were awaiting federal charges or in custody for federal crimes, and so through the Sheriff's Office, we reduced that contract to where there's only about 100 there who are waiting federal cases that can't be housed in other federal correctional facilities. The second one is expanding our community-based crisis support services. I'll just briefly mention a few. We can, of course, dive into any more detail you would like, but these are things such as 988 being up and operational, the county's Community Wellness Response Team, which is a non-law enforcement mobile crisis response team that is now 24/7, also the 11 Community Outreach Recovery Empowerment Centers, known as CORE. So those are just a few examples of where the county has expanded that community-based crisis support. We have also advised law enforcement agencies on options in the community for individuals charged with sight-and-release offenses. charged with site and release offenses, so trying to find alternatives if an individual needs a certain amount of services, or if an individual needs to be processed but not necessarily housed within a jail facility, can they be processed in these alternative locations that aren't the main jail? We're doing development and implementation of pre-arrement release protocols, mostly around that as Defense Counsel as well as probation with the court. We've supplied probation officers to expand pre-trial release options for court through risk assessments and monitoring services. Really, in 2024, the number of active probation pre-trial monitoring clients nearly doubled, and what this means is every person on pre-trial monitoring would have been otherwise been held in custody pending trial, for the most part. We've also completed a risk and assessment screening tools. It's a cross-disciplinary team of many of the criminal justice partners I've mentioned that have recommended setting guidelines, expectations, standardized training, and that report was shared with our Criminal Justice Cabinet, where discussions will continue. We've provided staff to complete behavioral health assessments. Changes in law in, let's see, it was January 2023 drastically expanded the number of people eligible to pursue mental health diversion. Now, initially, there was an immediate backlog within Behavioral Health Services, but over the last year, BHS staffing has streamlined, and so really, that being a major accomplishment has shifted a burden, though, to the court by increasing the volume of clients. So we're working with the court for increasing their capacity to hear more of these cases. We have developed and expanded contracts for community-based behavioral health services, and we've prepared for implementation of the CalAim Justice Involve Initiative, which is expanding pre-release and reentry services. We got that through a Proposition 47 grant, and if I can, I would like to see if Deputy County Executive Katari has some additional information on the CalAim.
Yeah, I'll just lift up, and I know the board knows this, but CalAim, we were intending to go live this year with that, and as a result of state regulations and guidance coming out later than expected, only one county has actually gone live with that so far, San Francisco. The rest of the counties are pointing to next year, probably September, October, when the implementation deadline is coming before they'll go live, and there's lots of moving parts and reasons for that. But as DC Jones pointed out, we did receive the Prop 47 grant. We'll be coming back to the board July 8th to get approval to move that forward. It was $8 million for us to actually create some more services for folks, so as they do leave jail, that we're able to more seamlessly link them to services, so we're excited to bring that back to you in July.
Thank you, Siobhan. Here are a number of Jail Population Reduction Plan challenges. There have been changes in the law, again, mentioned that earlier, removal of pandemic protocols, observed, the implementation of various programs have altered the expected outcomes of those initial recommendations, so what I am saying is, I believe this has rendered that 600 ADP number as a target as unrealistic based on all of these issues we're talking about. We are not ceasing pulling back on the jail population reduction efforts, where we can get individuals who might not need to be housed, who are just waiting for court dates, waiting for placement, like anything we can do to reduce that population, to free up other portions of the jail. But as far as that 600 target, we feel we are in a different place than we were a few years ago.
Through the chair. Yes?
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. Real quick question, follow-up on that, just so unclear, the having to have, the requirement to have a jail population reduction plan was part of the consent decree, but the actual number came later. Is that accurate? The number we came up with came later?
The number, actually, we did put as a target, but we did have that in the memorandum of agreement.
Okay, so I was under the impression that, because the consent decree was, I believe, signed in 2020 or something like that, that there was that mention of that 600 target then, when the county entered into that consent decree?
Great question. Actually, the second part, that number was in the 2022.
That's what I thought, okay, so I have a, okay, after the O'Connell consultant contract, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Here's what we see are some of the jail population drivers. Individuals are staying past arraignment three days, are largely high-risk, which means they're facing felony charges and/or extensive criminal justice history, and high-need, which means mental health, substance use, or chronic health conditions, et cetera, needs. Some information on this is that since 2021, those in custody, so we're seeing the population change, or we're better identifying the needs of the population, but since 2021, those in custody with serious mental illness had risen from 25% to 33%, and those receiving mental health services went from 50% to 77%. Another statistic here is that 94% of people of the average daily population are there for underlying felony charges. Large number of misdemeanors are booked into the jail, but most who stay are for actual So again, law enforcement agencies book, we have multiple 20-plus law enforcement agencies locally here in our county, they all book at our main jail intake. There's some exploration, the Sheriff's Office is doing it RCCC for some South County bookings, but primarily it is the main jail. And so we can't always control what, if a law enforcement agency is arresting more frequently and booking them into the jail, the Sheriff's Office is responsible for the intake when they're there. You know, and we're seeing about 32% of people booked for new crimes are released out the back door, if you will, within 24 hours. You may hear that term referenced as a quick, which means they haven't been housed in an actual cell, well, they haven't, they're not being housed there, they're actually released within 24 hours. We're working with all of our partners and Sheriff's Office on ways to perhaps reduce those amount of quicks that have to go through the jail, if they can perhaps be processed at an off-site location. We have been hearing from our law enforcement agency partners about some very large concerns about the extended amount of booking time in the jail. There are cases where it can be sometimes six hours. I did check in with Sheriff's Office just the day before yesterday, I believe, and found the average right now is two or 2.5 hours, but that is tying up law enforcement officers at these facilities. A couple primary drivers for that are the things we must do through the Mays Consent Decree, and that the current processing, the current booking process was outlined by our court-appointed subject matter experts, but we are looking at other ways we can shorten those times up clearly. Also, the physical restrictions of the space that is at the main jail adds for extended times as well.
Eric, I have a question. In one of the reports that you sent out, there were certain months that had a higher volume of arrests than other months. Is that, is that a norm or a trend? Because I saw, I think it was August of last year that had a really high peak, and then the other months were pretty average.
I do know occasionally there are seasonal crime and arrest and bookings, but I'm not able to speak to exactly that, but we can get that information back to you.
Thank you. Oh, I have one more request to speak. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. I also want to follow up on, as far as the booking times, are we going to, are you getting into that more in the rest of your presentation, or?
Actually, Supervisor, this would be the proper spot.
Okay, so let me, let me ask you a few questions about that now, and I, I know we have the sheriff here, and I see we have some other partners up there, including my old friend Chief Solomon from Elk Grove Police Department, and I have been, I'm sure like other colleagues up here, we've been contacted about the booking times. I'd like to understand that a little better. You made reference to the Mays Consent Decree and some additional requirements, as well as the limitations of the physical space. I wonder if, I don't know if, I mean, if Sheriff Cooper, if you wouldn't mind, I mean, I'd like to hear what your thoughts are on the, on the booking times and some suggestions you have on how we might be able to reduce that, if you wouldn't mind. I think that'd be really helpful for us up here to hear, because we're hearing from others.
Sure. So a big part of it is the Mays Consent Decree. You look at other, the other 58 sheriff's offices in California, the times are much, much lower, because we're meant to go through those steps and that process and ask those questions. So it really comes down to the consent decree that's making that program much longer. We talked to our law enforcement partners, so when they bring an inmate into the jail, we don't touch the NRS until they go in that pat-down area, so their paperwork's being processed, the booking forms, and going to see ACH. So most of that is an ACH issue, so they're there most of that time before we get them.
Okay, so correctional health, so part of his correctional health and being evaluated is slowing down the process?
That is a big part of it, yes.
Okay.
Under Mays.
And what about, and I don't know if this, Sheriff, you or Eric, in terms of, Eric in his slide here mentions, the prior slide mentions other booking facilities or processing facilities beyond RCCC, which I know has some of that capacity there, are there any other local law enforcement agencies where someone could actually get booked or processed for a misdemeanor arrest in the county?
Well, it's interesting, CHP is not bringing a lot of their DUIs to the main jail. They're signing them out, taking them to their offices and signing them out, and we really want those folks booked in our jails. But because of the long wait times and tying up, and as you know, on graveyard in Sacramento County, which is a big county, you have two two-man units north of the river and a supervisor, and two two-man units south with a supervisor, so on a crash, a DUI, you're tied up, so it ties up CHP quite frequently, and also our police departments, and that's really a big issue, getting those folks back on the streets. So we're seeing that, and that's really not what we want.
Right. And I just remember way back in the day, and working in LA anyway, you could, you could book someone at a lot of different facilities, local agencies had their own booking facility, and so it was, it was close by, it was obviously much quicker to get through. I just didn't know if there were any other opportunities like that in Sacramento County.
No, so we have the capacity, and we can do it, just the consent decree slows us down. If that was not in place, these officers would be in and out pretty quickly.
I do want to make one correction about that number 600, which was the target. We, Sacramento County, came up with that target number in our plan, which was informed by the O'Connell Research. The number 600 as a target was not even in the memorandum of agreement with council, so I wanted to clarify that.
Supervisor Desmond, can I add something? You had asked about, there's currently no other facilities that do that, but my understanding is Folsom City has a 12-unit, I don't know what they're doing with it, I think GALT has three beds or something to that effect, so there are other areas that they're not active.
Okay. That's good to know. So at one point, they were used for that purpose, though?
To be honest with you, I don't know. I was looking through some other reports that identified the GALT jail, and, or the GALT, I'm not sure what the terminology was, and then I've talked to previous councils from the council, people from Folsom, and they identified some places.
And yeah, it's just obviously in the interest of seeing if we have other options that would both relieve some of the, some of the pressure on the, on the main jail, but also allow these agencies to stay closer to their primary jurisdiction.
And I don't want to give any impression that it's up and ready, ready to run, it's just a physical facility there for them.
So just, Board members, Mike Ziegler, UnderSheriff Sacramento County, just to clarify on some of these questions, like on the numbers that CHP, on the DUIs in Sacramento, this is per them, we haven't had a chance to vet it, but we have no reason to believe they're not accurate. They're releasing 80% of their DUIs through citations to avoid the jail booking times. It's a huge number. And then on the question, I think, I think we have to be careful about other booking sites and accepting, because remember, when somebody gets booked, they have to be acceptable mental health-wise, medical-wise for incarceration. So you can move it anywhere you want, but the problem is not being able to get through that booking process fast because of the medical clearance. Does that make sense on that?
And so that's, that's more of a, I mean, you've always had medical clearance, I think, if someone had an issue, but there's probably heightened scrutiny as a result of Mays. Is that, would that be a fair?
I think so. I think, I think the side of caution has been taken, probably maybe, maybe a little bit too far on whether somebody can come to our, is medically cleared to come to our jail. So why I'm up here, the process, if, doesn't matter what agencies, they bring somebody into booking, there's a two-tiered medical system questionnaire that they got through, they have to get through. So let's say Elk Grove PD or us, we bring somebody in the jail, they'll go through that first tier medical screening, and then they're assigned a wristband. That wristband is either red, yellow, or green. And so say I come in from Sacramento County, and I have somebody with a green wristband on, but somebody comes in 30 minutes later from Elk Grove, and their arrestee has a red wristband on, that potential inmate jumps the line. So that, you know, a lot of, it's real, the time's real, but a lot of it's perception of, nobody likes to be line-jumped, right? And then after, once they get to their second medical screening, that could take an hour before they get to that point, and then the second medical screening is very long. One of the things we'd like to look at is being able to accept custody after the first medical screening, and then if they don't, and let the officer leave, if they don't pass that, if they don't pass a second medical screening, then that agency would have to come back and get them. So we're trying to work through this, but again, the Sheriff's Department has only so much control, we have to have the cooperation from Adult Correctional Health.
Under Sheriff Ziegler, what are some of the qualifying reasons why somebody would have a red tag?
So I don't want to get into all that, because, but I will tell you that it depends on who they're seeing sometimes, right? So somebody with blood pressure of, I'll just throw the number out there, you know, 150 over 90 would be acceptable by one healthcare professionals and then sent out by another. So the inconsistency does exist, but I'd much rather have Adult Correctional Health
Okay, we'll go on to Slide 11 here. So while the ADP of the jail system remains the, below the Board of State and Community Corrections BSCC-rated capacity and below pre-COVID levels, we are seeing that ADP is now increasing. So BSCC numbers, and that's what the percentage capacity means there, so in none of these years were they at or over what was state-rated, so that's just for context. The number there, we'll just look at 2019 with the 3,653, that was the average daily population for both jails, for those who are housed at the main jail as well as what's known as RCCC. A few things happened in each of these years, so number one, well, 2019 was pre-COVID, 2020, that was COVID, so as mentioned, there were emergency orders in place to restrict who could be booked, also in 2021, but those protocols were eliminated for the COVID in 2022. Also in 2022, that's when the Jail Population Reduction Plan was approved in December of that year, and that's also when we initiated the federal contract reduction, going from 300 housed within the federal system to 100. There are discussions about the possibility of reducing that number even more. 2023, we had completed that federal contract reduction, and also the mental health diversion laws changed. 2024, pre-arrement release process was fully implemented. And then we'll go down to May 1st of 2025, that's where we're seeing the jail population is on the rise. We do feel Prop 36 is a likely contributor, but we have limited data available so far. We're getting some, the District Attorney's Office, I believe, is tracking their Proposition 36 prosecution cases. The Sheriff's Office is, are tracking those in custody because of Prop 36. I think some initial data from a bit ago was about 300 of those in current population were Proposition 36-related.
Eric, I have a question. So the Sacramento region has grown significantly over the past five years, so is it fair to say that the average daily population will continue to increase because the population in the Sacramento region or Sacramento County is increasing?
There's definitely a correlation there of general population increasing, which often equates to more arrests and more prosecutions. Every jurisdiction's going to be a little bit different.
Thank you.
And despite the increasing ADP, there has been progress in many areas to identify where we can, again, reduce some of the lengths of. again, reduce some of the lengths of stay or other things, if we feel there's not a public safety concern for them to need to be housed. We do believe these efforts we've been doing, if it had not been for them, our ADP would be higher. So these are the jail population reduction plan efforts in progress. We're working on evaluations and analysis of pre-trial population to inform a court's pre-trial work group. This is one of many examples where we really need the court to assist us with a lot of these plans and programs. We have developed a, or we're in development of a public-facing jail population dashboard. Again, we're talking, we've been discussing it just recently, but talking to our local law enforcement agencies on booking practices, discussions with the sheriff's office on sentencing alternatives, what works and what might work for them, as well as preparing for CalAim Justice Involved Initiative implementation, which Siobhan Katari spoke about just a bit ago. So in the efforts to improve the jail conditions, as mentioned before, if the county can provide adequate conditions of confinement, jail population reduction plan would not be part of this conversation. Overall, there have been significant county investments in staffing, policies, facility improvements, and cross-departmental collaboration have improved conditions of confinement. Most agree the county is making progress, but to what level and how do we get into full compliance can be subjective. Jail conditions improvement are largely due to the efforts by the Adult Correctional Health Services, Adult Correctional Mental Health Services, Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, and the Department of General Services, especially when it comes to the capital projects. According to our, the county's last self-report, which went out January 2025 on the Mays consent decree, the county, we believe we are in substantial compliance with 207 out of the 320 provisions. Partial compliance in 106 of the 320. Non-compliance with seven of the 320. Those seven really are about these topics. ADA Disability Act pathways, housing areas and fixtures, standards for negative pressure isolation rooms, for specialty medical care requests, timelines, tracking, audits, and 30-day prescription accompanying all pre-sentence releases. Those are the primary areas of those non-compliance where we clearly have much work to do. We've made a lot of policy changes as well, all of the departments, from correctional health to the sheriff's office on a variety of topics. Here are some of them now. And then staffing investments. Let's see, while the consent decree was not officially signed until 2020, remediation efforts began as early as fiscal year 1718. Since that time, the county has added numerous positions. They're listed here, they're not, we may have missed some, but we really went back and looked through budget reports and our remedial plan. And this is our, we have our numbers, which we have added as a county, 440 full-time equivalent staff positions to support improved services in custody and to improve compliance within the consent decree. They are listed here by department, so 188 of those are sheriffs, 12 general services, 145 correctional health. And then you also have the contracted out there under UC Davis Mental Health. Estimated annual ongoing costs, that's 90 million annually. In addition, there have been numerous other investments to programs and services that really do support the jail population reduction plan, but might not necessarily be specific to, to the consent decree. And these are going to be things like efforts needed to respond to legislative changes and mandates that really do often hit the district attorney's office, the public defender's office, behavioral health, needed to process mental health diversion applicants. So moving a little bit into facilities investments, and DGS is here to assist me if necessary. Facility projects completed, Mays-related, are 1.2 million spent on completed facility projects. Facility projects in progress, 6.2 million spent on projects that are underway. 68.6 million estimated balance to complete projects underway. And this amount does not include the suspended jail annex project. Currently, 16 projects are in scope. I think that number has already changed since my slide. What is that number now, Josh? 20. So currently, 20 projects are in the scope and estimate phase to determine project costs and inclusion in the CIP. Here's a list of completed projects. I really won't highlight each of them. I'll go down to some of the design and construction underway. Some very critical areas for us to get in compliance with our Mays consent decree is expanding the APU, which is the acute psychiatric unit, and the suicidal inmate temporary housing unit. Expanding our intensive outpatient program. Again, here dividing some recreation areas to get more out-of-cell time, control rooms, control systems for RCCC, and adding some programming space and working on ADA improvements. So for facility planning, here's information on that, and this goes back to what's known as Framework 1, which is when the board approved at that December 2022 to look at the intake and health services facility, again, also known as the jail annex. You are aware, board, that there was a peer review study commissioned in 2024. That review was done by CGL. In February of 2025, the Board of Supervisors approved those CGL recommendations that came before you. And the summary of those recommendations is here, which was to suspend the jail annex project. While that is suspended, to establish a jail system planning compliance oversight committee. So really a policy-level group that involves the county executive's office, the sheriff, general services, et cetera. I'll go over more of that in a moment. And to now contract services in these four areas to really take back, step back and take a look at what does this county need regarding correctional facilities and the correctional system. These four things are a facilities conditions assessment, a population analysis, which does or is to include not just the jail population makeup and needs, but also trajectory of the county's overall population, similar to what you vice chair mentioned earlier about factoring in overall population. Operational analysis, we're using our resources the best way we can, as well as space program. So we are required to provide recommendations in ranked order, and those will come back to you, to the board. I'll have a timeline on that in just a moment. So moving that into implementation, again, in accordance with the board-approved recommendations from CGL, we did form this oversight commission that I mentioned. And here is the makeup of that committee, rather. That is the deputy county executive of administrative services, of health and human services, as well as public safety and justice, the undersheriff, undersheriff Ziegler, and we are informed with county council and leads from the various departments. The goal of this policy group is to bring to the top executive level, if you will, of all of the involved departments for us to prioritize what direction do we need to go in now? What solutions can we implement now? And it could be policy, it could be capital projects, it could be a number of areas. The committee meets monthly. We'll continue to meet throughout the jail facility planning process, facility projects. We did a charter for this committee. It ensures that there is community input, more community input than the former process was, was the direction we were given. And the RFQ, as mentioned, actually has been issued for the CGL recommended studies. So that's out and processed now. We did an extremely condensed timeline to get that done. And I am very thankful for DGS and sheriff's office and county council, everybody that put effort into that. And that was at the direction of the federal court, by the way, is to, to come back with a timeline and come back with a timeline sooner than later. County Council, Monica, do you have anything to add on that? Okay. And so we have to come back December 2026 to bring something to you as a board. Quickly to go over how we're doing the community engagement, really in three primary areas. These are really already existing bodies that a few of us are involved in. And we're going to really leverage them and focus on this, the Mays consent decree and jail population and facilities and get their involvement as we go through the RFQ process and the study. So we're really leveraging in these three areas. Again, one is the sheriff's community review commission. That's an open-to-the-public, once-monthly, very specific to sheriff's office issues. We also have the Community Corrections Partnership Advisory Board. That, that board has representatives from all of those different agencies you see there. And the Public Safety and Justice Advisory Committee, which I'll speak about shortly. We're also working with the CJC, the Criminal Justice Cabinet, where all of our systems partners participate from, again, defense counsel, DA, the court, all, and a number of police departments, so we can continue to get their input on what any potential future design or non-designer needs may look like. In August 2021, when the PSJA, Public Safety and Justice Agency, was formed, the Board of Supervisors required county staff bring forward a committee structure that would allow for community collaboration and a voice into the dialogue on decreasing the jail population. In June 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved the committee charter for that group, and there are 15 members. And they all have diverse backgrounds from a variety of areas all mentioned here, as well as represented by district, by gender, ethnicity. We have a very good cross-section of our community that's on that group. And we've had a few who have termed out and not reapplied and some new applications. So that's a very up-and-coming group with some new membership. We meet on that advisory committee quarterly in a large meeting, and then also monthly online. And they've been really tasked with and working, most recently, on the Mays consent decree in our jail. Just recent committee activities are that in January 2025, we held a large public meeting, really to generate greater applicant interest. We had many more applicants than we had space for, which actually I felt was a good problem to have. We carefully reviewed them, members were selected, and again, these are the topics we've been discussing. Also, the sequential intercept model is something that this group is working on. In conclusion, the work of the Public Safety and Justice Agency is never done. We're going to continue to engage the community and receive input on these primary areas. Jail system facility planning developments, population reduction strategies, and overall compliance with the Mays consent decree. I'll continue to provide a policy direction for the oversight committee. We're working on a pre-trial study. We're launching a public-facing jail population dashboard, and we're continuing to collaborate with all of our partners to see what are these impacts of Prop 36 going to be for us as a, as a county and system-wide.
We have some requests to speak. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thanks, Eric, for the presentation and the work you do, of course. I'm curious, especially with respect to the jail population reduction strategies and status and our progress with respect to Mays. Do you have discussions with your counterparts in other counties that are, that are under similar consent decrees? Because I think there are several, and some are, I think, further behind us. I'm just curious, can you give me just even a sense of where we are? Are we grappling with the same things, or do we have some things that are outliers in our county? I'd just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor. So yes, I do meet with my like peers in different counties across the state. And there are a few of them that are working with consent decrees for correctional facilities. We actually, every consent decree is different, and everybody is in a little different place. But we hope to learn from one another, and so I have regular conversations with, with those from other jurisdictions. But to compare sort of where we are with our consent decree to another county in place and time.
It's apples and oranges.
It is, but, but we do have many of the same barriers that we can at least discuss.
Okay. And with respect to the population reduction plans, do a lot of these other consent decrees, I know they're different in a lot of ways, but do they incorporate a reduction plan in some of those other consent decrees?
I don't recall if there's actual target numbers given that I was aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have some similar questions to start off with relative to the population reduction efforts. You mentioned that the 600-person number, I don't want to call it arbitrary, but it was a number that we came forward with that wasn't imposed upon us, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what did we use to determine that number? Or how did we land at 600 being the sweet spot?
Yes, it was right at 600. I think it was 592 or right there.
Okay.
That, that was informed by the O'Connell Research jail population study that O'Connell Research did. And, and after examining the criminal justice system at that place and time, it was believed that perhaps the jail population could be reduced in Sacramento County by nearly 600 if the county was able to do all of those 10 recommendations.
Okay, so it was almost a bottom-up approach of if we implement these things, that's what, this is the number we would get out of the population being reduced. Not necessarily a top-down approach of this is the capacity of the facility, and therefore this is how many people we should get out of there.
That is correct. And in fact, yes, there was never a overcapacity for our jail, at least in those recent years I listed. So regarding the BSCC-rated capacity.
Yeah.
Right, we've, since we've had our consent decree, we've always been under that number of how many beds the state says we could use.
And so if I look at that BSCC capacity, extrapolating out those percentages that you had in your slide, I think it's roughly around 4,000 individuals, give or take. Sound about right?
Yes.
And then the snapshot in 2021 was a little over 3,650. And that's the number that we were going to come down 600 from. And so I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is that the target figure would end up somewhere between 79 to 85% of capacity for the facility?
That sounds about right.
And so then, you know, obviously, the physical space constraints are, that to me, that's the biggest nut to crack as far as coming into compliance for, for Mays. There are policy things that we can implement and things we can do relative to medical screening and things that we can do relative to getting people through the court system faster. But I think it's the physical space constraints that's going to be our, you know, if nothing else, most expensive hurdle relative to what we're going to have to do.
Yes, Supervisor, I would agree with that, and I would even add that it is my belief if we do not complete some sort of construction, it would be extremely difficult to get out of this Mays consent decree without some construction of some sort.
So I agree with you, and I'm going to come back to that point. But as you look at the slide that was implementation, talked about what these committees are doing and what they're analyzing, is there a way to bifurcate something in that that gives us short-term achievable objectives inside of that 15 to 18-month window? And then have the, you know, longer-term, sustainable, ultimate implementation that would probably include the major capital project that you just mentioned? You know, that would be the recommendation to come at a later date. Is there, is there a way to sort of take down the lower-hanging fruit more quickly?
Yes, so we, we've been having discussions, and that is how we view the monthly meeting I mentioned. I'm calling it the policy group meeting, which is to talk about, okay, we understand this longer-term assessment and analysis is occurring. For some portions, it might make sense to make sure that gets all the way through. But there are other decisions we think we can make. there are other decisions we think we can make for immediate needs now that might be some capital projects and certainly a lot of the policy training staffing issues as well.
And so then, I guess, lacking that larger report, you feel authorized or empowered to go ahead and identify some of those things and move forward with them without having the comprehensive overall, here's everything with a nice bow on it?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's all my questions for now.
Okay. Okay, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We do, we have two speakers.
Good afternoon, Mayor Aquino.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Rodriguez, members of the board. My name is Sarah Aquino. I'm the mayor of Folsom. We fully understand the county's obligation to comply with the consent decree. We respect that, but I'm here to echo many of the comments voiced earlier about the challenges with the booking process at the main jail. Our officers are routinely spending three to four hours just to book one suspect, but they are often spending five or more hours down there. And of course, for every hour that they spend at the jail, that is an hour that they are not patrolling our streets and neighborhoods. So based on our officers' experience, we also believe that the pinch point lies with adult correctional health, and I don't say that to point fingers or to place blame, but we have to identify the problem in order to fix it. And so my request for you today is that you direct your staff, particularly those in ACH, to work with the police chiefs in the county and Sheriff Cooper's team to come up with a long-term solution to make the booking process more efficient. I'm joined today by Commander Brian Lockhart and Lieutenant Jake Verhalen from the Folsom Police Department, and they can speak more specifically about some of the challenges we're facing and what we are doing in the short term in our city to address the issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brian Lockhart?
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Brian Lockhart. I'm a commander with the Folsom Police Department, and to echo what Mayor Aquino said, this is a significant problem in our, not just in our city, but in the entire county. Like she said, our wait times are two, three, up to even eight hours, and to again concur with what the sheriff said, it seems to be that pinch point is, in fact, that adult correctional health area to get into the jail. This not only impacts us financially, but it's the safety of our community. For example, our city is a small city of 92,000. In the middle of the night in Folsom, our minimum staffing is four officers. We send one officer at, say, 2:00 in the morning to the jail, spend six hours there. That's 25% of our staffing, simple math, but 25% of our staffing. It directly jeopardizes the safety of our community. Also, we created what we call a jail booking officer program to combat this, and what they do is they're there to transport prisoners to the jail and to stay at the jail. If they stay at the jail, another officer comes, they can drop off. That's cost us, just this fiscal year, $110,000, and that's just for our small department of 87 officers. So I'm here today to ask for your help again to see, we want to collaborate, we want to do anything we can, but we need your help to apply some pressure to make a change. And again, this is, we are not unique in this. It's every other city, every other agency in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's great to see a familiar face.
That concludes your public comments.
Okay. So this is a presentation-only, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Oh, we have one more speaker. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. I know we're about to wrap this up, we're done with a public comment. I just want to thank Eric Jones and Sheriff Cooper and the Under Sheriff and our colleagues from the city of Folsom here as well. I do, you know, this issue of the pinch points of the jail, I think we need to really be looking at that very closely. I know you are already, Eric, but if it really is adult correctional health is the biggest cause of that, and I know we're limited with facility issues, that will take a long time to sort those out, but to the extent it's personnel-related or process-related, or Siobhan too, I'm sorry, then I really think we need to act with real urgency on this in the interest of public safety and in response to some of these concerns. And I know, Siobhan, you're queued up to respond.
Yeah, thank you. I'd love an opportunity just to address that for a moment. So, you know, definitely, there's a variety of issues that play into the booking times, and I can't speak to all of them. What I can say about correctional health is we have added staff over time, so it's not about the staffing. It's really this balance that we're being asked to achieve understandably between doing a very quick assessment and a comprehensive assessment to ensure we're not bringing folks into the jail that are really too sick to be there and that we can't treat effectively in the jail, and so it is finding that balance. And in fact, we did try a two-phase system, and the subject matter experts told us to stop doing that system. So we are consistently looking for ways to shorten that time period, but I would also want to layer on the facility concerns I know the board's aware of, and you did see as DCE Jones went over the facility capital improvement projects that are being done. A lot of them have to do with developing that space for mental health treatment, developing that space for HIPAA-compliant spaces where we can actually have the space necessary to do those assessments because we can't do them in the open. I do have my correctional health team here, happy to answer any more in-depth questions, and to the extent we can shorten them with the subject matter experts and PLO allowing us to do so, we will certainly look at that, but we have to balance not having adverse outcomes happen in the jail because we know that none of us want that, so thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that little further explanation. I mean, I think you understand, I think, at least where I'm coming from as well, let's leave no stone unturned, and really, we're not going to see big relief for anybody until we do what we need to do to the facility, really, the changes to the facility. But maybe there are other things we can explore with other locations downtown. I don't know if there are some kind of outside-the-box things we could be exploring in terms of other locations where that, some assessments can be done. I don't even know if that's possibly feasible. But I'll just finish it with this, is I, you know, I still am committed, and I think all the public safety partners are, to really maximizing our use of pretrial diversion, post-conviction diversion, investment and reentry programs to reduce our jail population. That's not going to interfere with public safety, but I think the reality is, obviously, we're in a different world now with Prop 36 passing with 70% of the vote. There is a public expectation that we are going to both hold people accountable who are committing crimes, but also be able to offer them the treatment. Those are the two inherent promises in Prop 36, and that's having a big impact, that as well as the population growth in the county. But I don't want us to lose sight of the importance of those other programs, ways we can help people avoid being in custody, remaining in custody, and returning to custody. So, thank you.
Before I make a comment, David Bianweva?
Yes, Supervisor. Two comments real quick. Earlier, you had a question about the booking priorities, and Under Sheriff Ziegler was started to mention it and said that I might have Correctional Health come up or Director of Health Services come up. He is here, Tim Lutz is here if you have that question. The second thing is, I believe Sheriff Cooper has wanted to make a statement also.
Okay. Well, you know what, before Cooper comes up, I'll share just a little bit. I was at Cap to Cap last week, and I had the pleasure of sitting on the public safety team, and this topic came up quite a bit in many conversations, and I learned a lot about adult correctional health in those conversations, and, you know, I flippantly said, well, I don't understand, why doesn't Sheriff Cooper just, you know, fire this organization and get a new contract? But that's, it's not that easy, and so there's a lot more complexity to this issue. I'm glad to hear that. We'll be looking at some other best practices that we can implement, but I think the, you know, the bottom line is that we really need to start looking at what are we going to do to build a new jail in the near future? The need is right before us. I think in terms of solving a lot of the issues, I think this is where a new facility will come into place, and so Sheriff Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Board Chair and members. Sheriff Jim Cooper, Sacramento County. I hear about the SMEs and the PLO, and that's a bit of the tail wagging the dog for a long time. They've been doing that. The sheriff's office has zero control over who remains in custody. That lies primarily with the courts, and the courts are risk averse. The population dropped dramatically during the COVID pandemic because the court implemented zero bail and other measures to reduce the population of inmates. The court's not under a consent decree and do not have to reduce jail population. The inmate population has increased to nearly the same levels we witnessed pre-pandemic since the court ceased the pandemic efforts. Sacramento County needs assistance from other entities to effectively reduce our jail population. What has the sheriff office done to do this, to address this? The sheriff office has cut 300 inmates from the U.S. Marshals contract, which accounts for nearly the entire decline in the jail population we now see. Prop 36 became effective in December of 2024. In the past two weeks, the Prop 36 population has grown by 17% and do not know where it will stop. We expect the population to continue to grow, especially when those inmates begin to be sentenced. The main jail was built in 1989. In its first decade, the inmate population outgrew the main jail, and we had to double bunk the cells to accommodate its growth. This has contributed to problems with the consent decree because the jail was underbuilt. When the main jail opened, the population in Sacramento County was approximately 1 million people. The population has since grown by nearly 60%. Think about your general plan for the county, for the cities, it accounts for growth. The county never accounted for growth with inmates. It's going to happen. Your number's going to grow, but no one took that into account. Sacramento County has plans to deal with the effects of the population increases has on its infrastructure, yet there have been zero plans for its jails. More bed space is necessary to accommodate the mental health and medical housing needs and account for future population growth. Just because we have more bed space doesn't mean we will use it. We just need to be prepared and able to offer adequate housing to inmates. Right now, our average daily population runs about 3,400, right about 3,000, 3,400. We book about 25,000 prisoners into the jail per year. Many years ago, we booked 50,000. So think about that. If our average daily population's around 3,000 between the two jails, they book 25,000 inmates into the jail per year. The vast majority come in and go right out. They do not stay. So the ones that stay are violent felons, no misdemeanors. The only misdemeanor arrests we keep are for drunk driving, who the judge orders there, or domestic violence, which the judge orders there. So it comes down, most of these folks have multiple FTAs and are not good people. That's why they're in custody. As far as majority, you will get out, cited out on OR by the judge. So the ones that are there, for the most part, need to be there, and that's a big issue, and how do we change that? The bottom line, we need a new jail. That's what it comes down to. A lot of people don't want to hear that, but that's the truth. Whether you build an addition on or a tower, it just doesn't work. With the health needs and AB 109, we have an aging population that's in severe need of medical care and mental health care, and that jail, because of the walls and the roofs, does not fit it. It's a tough spill swallow. The county has a lot of responsibilities. I get that, but we will never come out from under this consent decree unless we get a new jail built, and that's really the issue, and how do we tackle that? And the wait times are real, from the mayor, police departments, the CHP and other folks, and that is a public safety issue, especially on graveyards, because that's when you have minimum staffing, because most folks are at home, bed asleep. Those officers are out there working, and bad guys are out there. So obviously, that's 25%. Look at Rancho, Gulp, other smaller departments, that can tie up officers real quick, and you're not serving your community out there. So it is a real issue. I understand what they're saying, and they're right, so we've got to try and figure out how we work with this. ACH is a big part of it, but like I said earlier, things have to change with that. And sometimes their frustration is they'll show up to book someone, and they'll get sent out to the hospital, they'll refuse the booking, and the doctor clears them at the hospital and send them back to the jail, and ACH might refuse again. So you've got competing issues, so we've got to fix this, and I think there's a way we want to work and really resolve this issue, because at the end of the day, we're all Sacramentoans. So hopefully, we can do that and get this resolved, but even best-case scenario, a brand-new jail, five, seven years, a lot of us will not be here, but this is something we need to address now and really solve this problem. So we're ready to work and roll up our sleeves. We had a great meeting today. I think we can really tackle some issues on that, and we're going to take some of the suggestions that we heard and go deal with that and come back with some answers, but we want to be part of the solution and not just complain about that. We want to bring solutions of what we think works, and we are the experts in this field. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume?
Did you want to go first?
No, no, I haven't done.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, I just want to echo, I agree with the sheriff. You know, unfortunately, I was not here to make the prior decision to give direction to the consultants, but after seeing what happens when you try and fit eight pounds of sugar into the five-pound bag that exists in downtown, it just doesn't work. And so I'm not saying we need a brand-new shiny jail. I'm not saying we need just a sobering facility. I think we need to figure out how to get more room so that it's not so compacted and so that we can get in there and really improve the building that's there for, if folks are going to stay there. I mean, right now, you know, you saw the pictures in the report, and if you have to go and do an unenviable job in a dingy, bad location, you're going to be grumpy, and the people who are staying there are going to be grumpy. And it just, to me, that building right now makes a situation that people don't like to talk about even worse. And so if I could wave my magic wand, I would say we need to provide for those acute beds that are coming online so that we can have a psychiatric facility to offload those folks. We need to have a secure sobering center that we can bring that online and make sure we can offload those folks, keep them out of the booking loop. We've got to have some way to get the people that maybe aren't red-tagged or orange or yellow-tagged to say, look, let's get them over here where they're not tying the folks that are coming from miles away just to get the person into the jail. So I, that's why I asked about the sort of interim solutions, is because I think there's some things we really need to be focused on doing that's going to have utilization that aren't sunk costs that we can do while we're studying what the ultimate final decision is. Thank you.
Okay, well, that was presentation-only. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Now we are on to item 56. This is the Board of Supervisors 2025 Appointments From Your Own Ranks to Regional Water Authority. And so currently, we have Supervisor Patrick Kennedy as the member, and the alternate is Michael Grinstad. He's the appointed member, and I will just make a note that the alternate is the SCWA Agency Engineer or their designee, and he still holds that position. Would you like to just reappoint? Okay. Is that okay with the board? Okay, great. We'll make the note and publish the new own ranks list, and that concludes that for item 56.
Okay. Please call the next item.
The next item will be the County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Supervisors. Just a quick comment. Last year, we had our first Sacramento County Employee Day with partnership with Sacre Republic Soccer Team. We're going to celebrate that again on May 31st. You're all welcome to come to that. It's a Saturday night, I think game time's about 7:00. And included, we've reserved a couple of sections within the field for our employees. Last year, I think, or this year, I think we have about 400 people coming to it so far, which is a great turnout, and included in our package is we get to have a pregame high-five tunnel, and for those of you who have kids that are, or had kids that were small and you used to go up and do the tunnel, I'm not sure how we're going to do that with the players of six foot tall, and we might get stepstools or something for us, but also a photo on the field, so we'll be taking a photo on the field as we did last year, and then Sacramento Republic FC has dedicated a gift for us. Again, this is the second time that we've done this. In addition to this, you received an email not too long ago from Sacramento County LGBTQ Caucus fundraiser on June 7th. They're also partnering with the Sacre Republic FC Soccer Team, and they also have discounted tickets, and so I, it's a fundraiser for all the great work that the caucus does, which is part of Social Services Agency, and I think any support that you can provide would be great, so thank you very much.
Okay, there. No requests to speak. I have a few comments. I want to recognize Matt, Rhonda, and Henry from the Casa Roble High School for being honored at the 36th Annual Student Educational Video Awards, which celebrates excellence in student education media across the Sacramento region. Their creativity and hard work, along with the support of their teachers like Ms. Batsianis, made their recognition well-deserved. Congratulations. Then we are thrilled to congratulate Cam Scatibo on being drafted by the New York Giants. Your drive and heart made Rio Linda and District 4 very proud. We'll be cheering you on every step of the way as you take the field in the NFL. And then I want to recognize Sandy McCague for her incredible dedication to lend a heart, lend a hand in all volunteer nonprofit, providing animal assistance therapy across Sacramento, the greater Sacramento area. Her steady leadership, countless volunteer hours, and behind-the-scenes work have helped grow the program and bring comfort to so many. Thank you, Sandy. And that is it for... And that is it for me, and we will now adjourn at 3:18.